Evening, everyone. This is the August hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of New Canaan, regular meeting Tuesday, August twenty ninth. We have a few items. We have four specific items on the list tonight. We have some other things to discuss at the end. Administrative and procedural stuff that we'll get into, but why don't we jump right in? We have roll call. Let me just go through. Hang on one second, everyone. Get my clean list. All right, roll call, Dan Radman, I'm here. Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Ken Turner.
Here.
John Cris.
Here.
Art Kosova.
Here.
Chris Herring is not here. John Engel.
Here.
Paul Knag.
Here.
Tom Benton.
Here.
Alan Swedlow.
Here.
Okay. We have six. We have a quorum. For tonight, or any of these continued, or are these?
They're all new.
They're all new. So unless Mr. Herring shows up for tonight, Paul and Tom, you're seated for these cases.
This is.
So first one on the agenda, Twenty One Grove Street. Upon application of Jan Cohen, authorized agent for Fifteen Grove Street LLC owners for a site plan approval pursuant to section four point seven point C point one to allow racks for a wheat for indurier storage of lumber and garden center products in the business D zone at fifteen Grove Street map L, block sixteen, lot ninety one A. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and affiliation with the case.
Jan Cohen, I'm the owner and LLC manager of the property at Twenty One Grove Street and of Wheat and Durier Lumber Yard and Home Center.
Welcome.
Commissioner Radman, town planner Carrie and to the commission, I'm here to ask for permission to install erect racks in behind at the around the lumber yard. Back in the building, I don't know if we can put the site plan up. I can show currently. Currently, we are storing materials on the ground in parking spaces that are behind. I don't know if any. I'm maybe I'll assume that most of you have been to Wheat and Durier. So but in the in the rear building in the back, we are currently storing materials on the parking spots on the ground. It's it's unsightly and it's also not safe and it's also doesn't serve customers very well to having the materials there. We'd like to put racks up as you can see towards the back building where the materials currently are. Putting up the racks will not take up any any more space than is already being taken up by the the current, you know, the current location of the materials. We're not causing any problem for truck traffic, car traffic. The rain gardens for drainage, where the racks are not going to be in anybody's sight because they are lower than all the buildings, the current building included. It's basically a it's a, you know, it's it's no impact event other than being making the making the environment of the shopping experience and of the storage of the materials and of the safety of our employees and customers better. It's the relatively simple racks. Have you any it's racks we actually used to have at Wheat and Durier many years ago? So it's it's nothing new. That is not a that's not a picture of the current building, but that's a picture of our current of what the racks look like. And it's basically an open racking system. It just keeps everything off the ground and everything very neat.
You go back to the site plan? Commissioners, I'm sure you're all familiar with Wheat and Doria's site. So this is the building in the back as you go through the sort of the pinch point driveway as you enter the lumber building. This is that building and along the east and south edge of it, correct?
Correct.
Would there on that site plan, you're showing?
Sorry, one second.
What appears to be something on the north side, which is kind of the drive aisle. Are those also new racks?
When you say I'm not too good at saying north and south, let me see.
So when you when you enter through that driveway towards the back building on the right side.
Those those are currently pallet racks. Those are not. Those are not installed racks. Those are that stacking of of pallets of mulch, et cetera, that are that's already there.
And that's to remain and won't impede circulation.
The racks that were that I'm talking about that need to be constructed would be the along the railroad track side and the and the back of the racket club. Behind that building.
The parking spots in the back, there's eight and ten parking spots. Would those be unusable once the racks are in?
They are. They will be unusable. We currently have one hundred and nine spots on the site. The when we've got site plan approval back in two thousand ten or eleven, we had, and I sent this along to the commission with the the parking study, we needed seventy seven. This will this will still bring us down to this still brings us down to well over to eighty seven spaces on the site. We don't use the spaces now. We truthfully, we honestly, we haven't used them since the day we rebuilt Wheat and Durier. We we just we just didn't have any room for all of our we. We don't have any room for bad goods, mulch. There's some lumber products we don't have room for, so they've all been sitting in those parking spaces now for well over ten years.
Okay. And then there is a retaining wall to the west between yourself and the the condos that are directly to the west.
Yeah.
Can you give us? I don't know if you have a section. Is there any idea of how high is is the condo and the grade of the condo relative to your parking lot and building?
Well, above the twenty feet that those racks are those racks are going. There there's no there's no site visibility at all from from the adjoining neighbors at all. The fence has got to be almost thirty five feet, forty feet up in the air, the top of that fence.
It's Commissioner Chris, so Mr. Mr. Cohen.
I'm sorry.
So it would be those those three racks I see in the far left of this picture. Those the ones closest to the condos?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, do you just need to speak, need to speak in the, sir, you need to speak in the.
Sorry, microphone.
Okay. Does it? Oh, okay. So this this is a rack here, and this is the rack. This here in here, that's those are just pallet racks. They're not. They're not. They're only they're only ten feet high. Those are just pallet racks. They're there. We use them now. Those racks are there now. They're not. They're not installed in the ground or they're not fastened.
So the racks you're planning to put in would be the ones on the called the backside of the tennis area and along the railway on the left, sort of the L shape.
They they have to be. They have to be installed. They have to be fast and installed. They have. They have to be bolted to a bolted to a footing.
I I assume to place materials, remove materials, given the bulkiness you would use like a forklift.
We we that's true. And the other thing that we're also investing, I don't I don't know if any of you have been in weed lately, but we've been spending a lot of money refurbishing and refreshing the store. And one of the things we're also we just purchased, it's not in yet because it's the everything takes a long time to get these days, but we've purchased a new type of forklift called a combi lift, so we do not have to raise materials up high like, you know, how forklifts grab something and it's and it lays across the forks in a perpendicular way, a combi lift carries materials at parallel. So we can carry everything low to the ground, so we don't have to. So once it's picked, we travel with it close to the ground, not high up in the air. That lifts on its way now. We just purchased that to make the whole movement of materials in the lumber yard and on the site safer and better and more efficient.
Is the space you have to access these racks you are applying to to us to install? You have enough maneuvering space and so forth?
Yes, yes. The racks take will be no different from a maneuvering standpoint than the materials we're currently stacking back there. We stack three, four pallets higher, two, three pallets high. It's the same. It's it's the same condition, only better because we can now, instead of worrying about something toppling, which is what you worry about when you stack materials that things could topple. You won't have to worry about that anymore because nothing's going to topple.
Also.
We're in the plan by the fire marshal as well before this evening got here, so.
Good. Also, also, sir. I'm wondering about the durability of these racks as far as rust and.
They're all treated. No, they're all. These are all. These are all. This this is a. This is not inexpensive and they're all painted, treated. They're not going to rust is something that we I mean, I have a. We have other lumber yards in in Cornwall Bridge and Bridgeport, and these racks, they do not rust unless you know, unless unless you damage them and you chip it all off, you know, but typically that rust is not a problem.
Just a final question, sir, if I may, at the I guess you have. I want to call it a roof on top of the rack.
A shed, yeah.
It's sort of like the top of hide dressers that never get dusted or cleaned, sort of gunk appears over time, especially outdoors. I'm wondering about the cleaning of this to ensure sanitation and.
There's a slight pitch to them. The chances of anything, you know, you know, look during the fall, yes, can things drop on the top or something like that, but they're on a slight pitch just to shed the water off the materials. Chances are anything that's sitting up there that that's of any magnitude is gonna just it's gonna be. It's not going to last. And as far as keeping it, keeping an eye out, we can't. It they're they're spaced in a way that weight or something would not be a problem. Snow is not a problem. They're just not that big. They're only these. These are not big shed. This is not a big shed. It's a very small. It's a small shed roof.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is my question, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question for you on the racks. They're static, right? They're static. They they don't move. They're not motorized.
These racks cannot move now.
Okay, so there's.
They can be disassembled. They can be disassembled, but they cannot. Once they're they're not. They will not move.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Knag. How is your volume of customers change from the last time you were here in two thousand eleven until today?
That's a good question. You know, our volume, we we did Doria is doing very well. The the store is a we've tried very hard to improve the store over the years. Our volume of customers has increased. Our sales are better. We've had some difficulties in the past because of building materials, because we can't. We we there's only because of the size of the property, there's only so we can't, you know, in today's world. Some beams are forty feet long and have to be processed. We don't do that in New Canaan. We do that in our other yard and we ship directly to customers. So we are hampered by some of the materials we can carry only because the site's not that big and we don't. We can't carry them, but typically Wheat and Durier has been a wonderful store. I've owned it since nineteen ninety three. I'm I so we've owned it. I've owned it over thirty. It's almost over. Yeah, over thirty years in October. It's a great store. Our customer base has increased and we've enhanced a lot of products over the past year alone. If you've if you've been in the store, you probably noticed it.
So maybe you need more parking spots now than you did the last time you were here when we did the parking study.
Well, yeah, you know, our our business is in and out. People don't come to stay. Parking's never really been an issue for us. We're one of the sites in New Canaan that enjoys our own parking. These particular spaces, Commissioner, is these particular spaces are taken up already. So whether the truth is that we've unfortunately not been able to, we don't. We never needed these spaces. We when we when we zoned the property years ago, we we put them on the map. But we didn't. We didn't need to. There'll be no loss of parking because we don't. No one's going to go back there and park anyways. Especially a customer is not going to go back there and park. So, you know, and employees, we haven't had no issue with employees parking on the site.
Are there are there at times when you're very busy and there's no parking in your parking lot?
Can it happen? I suppose it could, but no, I don't. I have not recalled any parking problems in the parking lot. Not for many years of I as I've owned the even when even back in even back in the early nineties, if you remember Wheat and Durier, that whole area where it's now parking, that that was all covered with lumber. You know, we so we we we've never had really had a parking problem or a transportation problem on the site.
So the previous application when when Wheat and Durier moved to the back and pet warehouse, pet pantry or whatever moved to the front.
Yes.
What year was that?
I think we started construction in two thousand eleven. I think the site plan was approved maybe in two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten. Okay, so at that time you had pet pantry, which was, and correct me if I'm remembering this incorrectly. Pantry was in the front where it is now, but it was larger. And there the Wheat and Doria space currently was smaller because you've currently you just recently.
Other way, other way around. Pet pantry was never there. Wheat Wheat and Durier was occupied the entire.
Oh, I know that, but when in two thousand ten, eleven, when when the split was made and Wheat and Durier moved to the back.
Okay.
Pet pantry went to the front.
Correct.
Was there another tenant in between?
No.
It was always one or the other, retail, one or the other.
They they have about six thousand feet of the of the site and we have the rest.
Okay, and then there's some office space.
We have some office space on the second floor. We have a and we have fifteen Grove Street, which is another building on the end of twenty nine Grove Street. Yes.
So to confirm with Sarah, the calculation of seventy eight required. That still remains the same because it's still retail, retail.
Exactly.
Okay.
Commissioner Benton here, obviously thinking the neighbors on the backside. As you have more capacity to hold material, are you going to see any change in delivery time and pickup time?
I didn't hear what I didn't. Can you repeat the question?
If you have more material being stored there, is that that's obviously going to increase probably the number of people come and go with material. Is that going to stay within the same work hours?
No, no, it's really a matter of us improving what we currently have. I I'm not. I can't hold any more inventory than we already have. So it's not a matter of Mac. It's not a matter of increasing inventory, increasing truck traffic. It's really a matter of it's a matter of safety. It's a matter of customer service and it's a matter of taking care of, you know, having the site look correct. It it's not a matter of trying to in increase inventory or or, you know, increase, you know, more more of this or more of that. That's not. That's not the intention here at all.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question, Commissioner Ward. The seventy eight parking spaces which you feel are adequate and have been adequate. Are are they solely used by Wheat and Durier or do other vehicles for the pet shop or offices nearby offices ever occupy part of your seventy eight spaces?
The space count, sir, the space count did not include twenty nine Grove Street. The space count does not include fifteen Grove Street. It only includes what we use with pet pantry, and that's all.
So the seventy eight is.
Is 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 more than adequate, yes.
And it doesn't get used. Doesn't get used by your neighbors.
If they do, if I do, if they do, it's not because they're supposed to. They just do. I hope hopefully they don't, but they but I guess it happens. We're neighbors, you know, so it happens.
But it but it does include thirty one, thirty three, thirty seven, and twenty seven Grove Street, right? The parking count?
No.
It does not.
No, it's only that parking count, the hundred and nine spaces we have is on the site we own, which is twenty one, which is twenty one Grove Street. It does not include anything else.
Okay.
And and it's it's a hundred and nine spaces. And I'm and we're currently covering, like I said, currently covering. What I write here. We covering about about we're covering about nineteen spots right currently right now, so we still would have eighty eighty seven spots. But we're covering those nineteen already. And that's just for Twenty One Grove Street.
Yeah, because you've got forty forty four spots in the rear and thirty six spots in the front, something like that.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm we have parking is not parking has been one of the blessings of the of our of our site.
Commissioner Chris again, so I assume you have handicap accessible parking.
Of course, of course.
None of the none of those spaces are being going to be used for this racking.
There would be. They wouldn't even qualify as handicap spots back there.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
So Commissioner Turner. The you've got quite a robust landscaping department going on and how many spaces are being lost by the plants that are stored?
Well, the plants of the store are no no spots are being lost because that's part of the approval. Those that place where Greg's he's a tenant of ours, Greg's Garms Center. That square was not included in the parking count. That that those spots were not spots. That's his part of his lease. Okay, he does have some trucks that park there, so he does share parking because he's a tenant. But the rest of his accord, his lease, though, only occupies that that area where you see the plants in front of our store. And he has a and he has a section behind fifteen Grove Street where he leases ground back there where he stores where he stores plants. They're not on parking spaces. He does unload trucks sometimes, and sometimes I do get mad at him for keeping some plants on the parking lot, but he takes them off. He does take them off and move them. Greg's been with me. Greg didn't. They've been tenants of ours for since, I think, nineteen ninety five or ninety for a long time.
So basically, no spots are being lost.
There's there. Like I said, this is a no impact on a parking spot issue. There's this is not. There's no impact here. We're like I said, we're using these spots already for the same for the exact same purpose.
Thanks.
And commissioners, just to and correct me if I'm wrong. When customers come in and need to load up lumber, and this is personal experience. You the customer can drive into the warehouse in the back and load up, correct?
Yes, that does not.
And they have to exit and navigate around this back area where the racks are going, so. Relieving that congestion will help that flow.
It definitely will help that flow. The racks are not even deep enough to even take to go to the end of the space.
Right.
It'll actually help that flow, and that's another reason we're doing it. It's it's definitely. It's not working right now for us, and it's now gotten to a point where you know, we have a we have a we're like our focus is our our focus is improving Wheat and Durier. It's a big part of our company's, you know, our company's future plans, so.
Got it. Commissioners, anything else? You're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Next application we have that that application is closed. Next application we have is item number two eighty two Brookwood Lane. Upon application of David Rucci, Lampert Tuie Rucci, authorized agent for Ken Show Trust owners for a site plan and special permit approval pursuant to section three point three point C point five to allow the property to be used for farming as set forth in Connecticut general statutes. One one Q. Is that am I reading that correctly? Chapter one one Q?
Yeah.
In the two acre zone at eighty two Brookwood Lane, map thirty three, block forty one, lot four. Thank you, sir. Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, David Rucci, Lampert Tuin Rucci. I'm here this evening to represent the Ken Show Trust. With me is with me this evening is Sean Keating, the applicant, Mr. Mr. Gear here as well. And we have Lynn DeAndrea, who is the site engineer on the property. He's on Zoom. I'm not sure we're going to need him or not, but I did ask him to be here just in case there were some questions about his site work on the property. So this is, I think, the second one that you guys have all seen as far as farming goes. I'm not sure how many of you were here for the last one. But essentially, what what happens here is you can use the zoning rules in both the state have been adopted by the town of New Canaan, and the town of New Canaan allows for farm use as either a principal use where you could use the entire property for it or as an accessory use. In this particular application, we're using it as an accessory use. It's going to be there's going to be about four and a half acres of property that are for the residence itself. And then there's going to be about another twenty seven acres or so for the farm itself. I'll go through sort of quickly my presentation, and then I'm going to ask Sean to talk about what exactly this farming, Sean Keating, exactly what this farming you know, is and how it works. It's important to know that you know, we're really fortunate, honestly, in this town to have, you know, not only this farm, but the other farm applications that we have people who really want to be stewards of this property that is here now. And they're not looking to subdivide it, and they're not looking to add more houses to it. This is going to be a very low impact farm. This is not something where you're going to have the public coming in and out or anything like that. What it's really going to be designed for is for mushrooms, honey. We may bring in goats later. It's not necessarily part of our application. The goats right now. We're going to have to come back through the health department for that particular aspect of it. And then those items will be sold directly to the consumer, so they'll go directly to, you know, a restaurant or they'll go directly to the flower shop in town, whatever it happens to be. To give you sort of orientation of this particular piece of property, you're looking, like I said, at about thirty three acres of property. It extends from Brookwood Lane. You'll see it sort of goes along the back of Smith Ridge and Norholt Drive here. It ends up on sort of the field club on the south side. And then it runs, you know, this is Brookwood Lane right here, and this is actually Glenn Drive. So it's it's obviously a fairly large piece of property. The current survey, which I've blown up on some other areas, is just showing you where we're actually going to be doing this particular work. And I think it's easier to use this particular slide number seven. And you'll see that we've sort of designated and orientated the different parts of the farm that we're putting together. You'll see that they're color coded as far as what we're looking to do. You can see that we sort of have the mushrooms here in the pink. The yellows is for bulbs. We have some cutting areas in here. And I'll kind of blow those up as we move through. Like I said, right now, we're doing a lot of beekeeping. We've got we've secured some logs to use for the mushrooms, but I'll, like I said, let's have Sean go through that because he knows a lot more of it about that than I do. Here's once again, so the orange on your on your map sort of here is the beehives. This is what's there today. As you move through, you see sort of where the where the bulbs are going to be in sort of these yellow areas here. And these are just that's what it looks like today, the actual areas that we're going to plant in. As you move down, this is sort of the mushroom production here in the pink. And that's kind of on its way right now. This is sort of a path that gets there, and I think one of the things to also recognize about this particular piece of property is it's always had some sort of kind of farm aspect to it. I remember, you know, when I was growing up on the field club, they always had cows over in that area. They had a lot of dairy over there. I'm not sure if they ever used them for that, but I know that the Danas did have cows on the property, so there are paths that run in and around these properties, which is really, really interesting. I think they had horses back there at another time as well. We are not planting cows or horses. But here you can see sort of these paths that that already exist along around the property. This is what the mushrooms look like and how they're going to get have those bloom. And once again, I'm going to have Sean talk to you about that. I'm just kind of sliding through a little quickly here because really, I'm sure you want to hear more about the farm aspect of it. But as you can see, it's a huge piece of property. These are the the trails that are already there, so they're going to be really low impact on even when we're moving things in and out. I have received phone calls from, oh, probably four or five neighbors. Just, you know, they were very concerned more about whether this is going to be some sort of big commercial operation, and it's really not. I mean, the owners and they'll probably talk a little bit about this as well, but they both are they both grown up on farms. They're very interested in farms and teaching their kids about farms. They in their prior properties had also have goats on some of those properties, chickens on some of those properties. So have grown vegetables, have given those vegetables to some of the pantry food pantries in the towns that they've been in. So this is really important to them. And like I said, just as someone who's been from New Canaan, it's just important that we have, you know, another big space around that area right there, sorry, is going to be sort of for more wildflowers and kind of where the bees are. Last time we I did one of these applications, it was sort of a step process. And so I just wanted the commission to be aware from a master planning perspective, we may have to come back here for some other items that 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 come about. So some of the things that we've talked about doing in the future is berries, planting berries, maybe planting more trees, maybe bringing goats in or chickens to a certain extent. So I just didn't want the commission to be surprised if you saw something else coming later on that hasn't really been decided yet, but I do think that's something will be coming in the future. There are a lot of farm benefits, but I think right now what I'll do is ask Sean to go through sort of how this farm's going to work. He can talk a lot about the benefits at the farm. Will give not only the local community, but the town of New Canaan as well. So Sean, you want to just talk briefly about that? And if you want to move these pictures in and out.
Yeah. Do you want me to do that? Yeah, sure. No, I think we're good. Okay. Good evening. Hi, good to see you all. My name is Sean Keating, and forgive me for reading from my notes that I just don't want to forget anything. It's my privilege to be helping Alejandra and Rich. It's my privilege to be helping, uh, Alejandra and Richard, uh, with their new home on Brookwood Lane. Um, it, if, I don't know if you've been there yet, but it is beautiful and rare, uh, thirty-two acre tract of land, um, which they hope to protect from future development. Uh, and combined with their love of nature, they have imagined, uh, a very unconventional kind of farm on which to raise their family. When people think of farming, they often imagine fields of monoculture crops and heavy machinery. That is not what we are proposing. Uh, the gears wish to keep the land very close to what it is now, and we have worked hard to choose a business model that requires. Minimal impact and very low maintenance. Our primary crops, as you heard, are woodland grown mushrooms and honey. Uh, we started with six hives this spring, and they're doing very well, you know, especially because it's been such a wet season. Um, and we plan to add six more next year, next year, next in the spring. The apiary requires only a visit twice per month from our bee expert, so very little traffic, and she drives a car, no trucks. Um, once the colonies are established, um, we'll just manually spin the combs and harvest. Uh, the honey once or twice per year, depending on if we're having a good year or not. Uh, the mushroom operation is similarly, uh, low tech. We are currently gathering the hardwood logs, mostly white oak, and they'll be inoculated with shiitake spore. And left in woodland areas, uh, of the property. I think you saw the picture of what that, that area looks like. After seven months, they begin to fruit, and mushrooms will be gathered by hand as they're needed, as we have a demand from local restaurants and so forth. We plan to deliver our produce in small quantities, um, to local restaurants and to markets. Uh, the owners of Plum Plums, or what I speak with. Quite often, they were interested in shiitake mushrooms as a, as a product that they, that they can offer. And obviously locally grown, especially with mushrooms, it's important that they're fresh. That's the restaurateurs where they're like that. There'll be no sales on site, and the farm is not open to the public. Um, so we've discussed other ways that we can use the land in the future. It's not, um, you know, it's still in flux, obviously, but. Planting bulbs for cutting flowers is a no-brainer. We, we can plant, you know, large areas of bulbs, cut flowers, bundle them, and sell them in local flower shops. Um, we've identified areas where we could also grow perennials, um, and ornamental grasses, so pasta, daylily, muscanthus, sinensis, that sort of thing. Um, which we could sell directly to landscapers. Uh, there's plenty of space for raised bed vegetable gardens, uh, berry bushes. We've talked about an orchard potentially. There are currently sheds and a barn on the property which support the storage of tools and equipment. Um, future plans may include a small greenhouse so that we can extend the season, but that will be part of another application. The use of this land is consistent with Public Act four ninety, which aims to preserve farmland, forests, and open space. Connecticut is losing about eleven thousand acres of farmland per year, and once lost, that farmland is often gone forever. Restoring this parcel to a working farm is obviously beneficial to the preservation of open space and natural habitats. And will be free of herbicides and pesticides, which is significant. Um, there have been, um, cost of community service studies, uh. Which determine the fiscal contribution of a variety of land uses based on municipal data. Both across the United States and in Connecticut, these studies consistently demonstrate that for every dollar of tax revenue. Generated from residential development, on average, the town spends a dollar nine to a dollar sixteen in supporting that land. For farmland and forest and open space, every dollar of tax revenue generated. Only an average of thirty-five cents to thirty-one cents is expended to support that land base. So there's actually a fiscal surplus. From farms to help towns offset the shortfall created by residential demand. Uh, the Connecticut Farm Bureau has reviewed our project. Uh, they're actively supportive of our venture. Um, and we're asking your support, uh, with the application as a valuable contribution to the New Canaan community. Promoting stewardship of the land while supporting a source of fresh locally grown produce. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, first of all, Mr. Kieran is so welcome. Um. A few questions to start off with. Um, the majority of this is fairly low impact in terms of. Um, what it's gonna be doing to the site and how it's gonna be changing the site, if, if anything. Um, for myself, I think the primary concern is the goat, the goat, the future goat paddock and goat shed. Storage, everything else. We went through this with a similar application for a barn and, um, other. Amenities to go along with the goat barn up on Owen Oak. Yeah, it was up on Owen Oak closer to Pound Ridge.
The boss workers, I know that property.
Yep. So, part of that application not only involved the barn, but a, um, dumpster for the, um. For the waste, for the, uh, um, manure. Um, and how that would be contained and screened and smells and everything else. And I guess the, the main concern I have here is, looks like the goat paddock and access to the goat paddock. Uh, which looks like this circular drive that goes around that area is coming off of the cul-de-sac at the back of Brookwood. Is that correct?
Yes, that, the, that, that access point is through there. The, the primary difference between. This and, um, the boss worker residence on Owen Oak is they have pigs. So manure becomes a, a much more substantial, um, concern with pigs where.
Pigs now?
I'm sorry.
They have pigs now?
They have always had.
Yeah, I thought it was goats that they were.
They have, they have three goats, a couple of sheep and pigs, yeah. So, and, and they're, they're more of a rescue operation, you know, they're, they, they save them from farms, actually.
Yep.
Um, so, uh, so the goats are not part of, uh, our active business plan at the moment. Um, there's, the, the gears have had the goats previously. They've pretty low maintenance, low key.
Mm-hmm.
We've talked about the possibility, eventually, maybe if, if somebody has an interest in goat's milk cheese or something like that, we, we could, we could look into it. But, um, goats don't create the same manure issues that, that pigs do. You know, it's, it's a completely different type of.
How bad is goat manure?
Well, it's, it's good for.
I mean, in terms of its impact on the neighborhood, could you talk, I, it's not as bad as pigs.
Yeah, it's.
How bad is it?
It's, it's really, it's not, it's not even an issue. I, I think actually the gears may wanna speak to that. Good, yeah.
Yeah, come up to the microphone.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Listening to our proposal here. Um, yeah, we have seven goats right now. And, um, frankly, we don't, we don't have a dumpster. We don't have anything like that. Um. The effect is no odor with goats. It's very small pellets like a rabbit. Very tiny and, uh, very easy to clean up, and we have a spot of compost area. In our current property in North Salem, uh, it composts very quickly. I mean, literally goes into the ground, and if it wasn't concentrated, you have enough field for them. You don't do anything. It just. Goes right into the ground and deteriorates very quickly. It's not like a cow or, or sheep, which, um, or pigs, which are really. Very messy animals. Uh, horses are a little better like that, but the horses that I've had in Pound Ridge, we had a dumpster for. And took them away, but with the goats, we had nothing like that, nothing.
We, we actually have goats at Irwin Park, and I, I'm not aware of any issue at all. No.
In any event, that's not for the current application. So we, I mean, we probably would like to get our seven goats to come over and live with us, but the expanding into seven hundred goats is not on the agenda. But we would have to come back to you for that in any case.
Let's commission present a few questions if I may.
Yeah.
Um. As there will be produce generated, uh, there'll be a need to move it from site to elsewhere, which means you're putting in a truck of some sort. And then moving it off-site, uh, I assume. A pickup or van, some so forth, uh, which we need to periodically. What are your thoughts as far as. So graphic and also to bring materials onto site for the farming as well as for the household.
Right.
Uh, could you share with us your thoughts on what that might entail?
So in terms of, um, uh, and even property maintenance, you know, maintaining, it's, it's a fairly minor, um, operation. Because it's mushrooms and, um, uh, honey, it's something we can literally move in a pickup truck or a car. Um, it's not, it's not, you know, a vast amount of, 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 of material. We're not planning on having any commercial, big commercial trucks or anything like that. It will be perhaps in. Our eventual plan to get a pickup truck for the farm, just to be able to transport things around. But, um, I don't believe there's any, uh, uh, any need for anything more than what a local. Uh, neighbor would have for their landscaping company, you know, in terms of any vehicles coming in or out of the property.
And you, you have someone who is managing your beehives?
Yes, yeah, an expert on, on, on bees.
Expert defined as what?
Well, she has, she, this is all she does, and she's done it for many years. Her name is Christie, uh, uh, her nickname is Cat K. Uh, yeah, so, um, she just does this. She. She looks after some other hives for me at, at other places in Fairfield and, and some other locations, and, and she just loves it. She just, you know.
She designated as a master beekeeper as a designation?
I'd have to ask. I, I have never actually asked whether she's a designated.
Bring up the hives again, please. I'm a beekeeper.
Uh, excellent.
Another reason for Mr. Mucci to get annoyed with me.
Does not surprise me.
I just made a couple of points of a master beekeeper, yeah. One, you didn't paint your woodenware, which means it's gonna rot, so you should have painted it before you put it in, just saying.
Okay.
Also, they're not pitched properly. You're supposed to pitch from at least seven degrees forward to deal with water draining out. So you say master beekeeper. I'm not looking at a master beekeeper setup. That was my question.
It might be, it might be the photo is, is, is incorrect, cuz the, the hives are really happy, but. You know, and we've had a.
Fancy than mine. I use cement blocks. It's cheap and cheerful. It works well.
Uh-huh, uh-huh. And, and eventually, we, we will. I remember your point last time when we were thinking about bees for weed farm. And, uh, we will eventually have a solar powered bear wire that goes up just to stop, you know. The potential for that, which is something you mentioned the last time.
I never had that problem, but, uh, I, I hear you on that. Um, further on this, um, I. As part of the farming, uh, activity, are you planning what type of herbicides, pesticides, spraying, et cetera? Are you contemplating?
Organic. We're not, we, we can't, especially with the bees, we can't take any chances with, with anything.
Understand bees, yeah. They don't like pesticides, I get, I get.
Yeah.
No, we wanna keep this, obviously, it's okay. We got kids, we got.
Kids, step up to the, come up to the microphone. Sorry, sorry. It's on the record, sir.
Uh, just. We got, we've got four kids, three of them are young kids, and we're super careful about. What we put in the ground, what we put on their skin, what they breathe. I mean, we're, we're really very careful parents about this, and this is, this is a family operation, and that's really the intention. Is that these kids, like I did, grew up around animals, and my wife did too, giving them that experience, and. Frankly, this extraordinary property that we were able to get and have it be that close to this extraordinary little town. Is an amazing opportunity to do that, and we feel saving this too for posterity. Um, we had no intention to ever subdivide this or do anything commercial with this at all, but to use the land as it is. Name of the, the, of the farm is Clearwater. I mean, that's really the intention here, is to keep a clear ground, clear water, clear air. Um, hopefully, it'll pay for itself in the process, but this is not a commercial operation you can imagine. Um, it's, it's something actually my wife wanted to do for the kids. And so that's why we're doing this, and we'll, we'll do the best we can possibly do, and I learned from what you just said. From anyone else who's got a good idea of how to keep this as clean and organic and authentic as it possibly can be.
And for the question, if I may, on, uh, would the preparation for the, for the farming as well as other activities on the property maybe. Encouraging or discouraging invasives, as well as the purposeful planting of anything that might be deemed invasive?
Well, I mean, Sean.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we're definitely going to, you know, we're monitoring the, 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 the area. Could you bring up a picture?
There's a big, the big meadow there that hasn't been cared for well, but there is grass in there and some invasives. And we're gonna.
Poison ivy and things like that.
Poison ivies. Natural here.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You don't like it, but it's.
Exactly.
It's a natural. Uh, thinking of mugwort, you have all kinds of other things.
Yeah, and, and I.
Want to miss.
And we, I had a meeting with, um, Kathleen, uh, from inland wetlands the other day. And we talked specifically about how we would encourage the meadow, not by tilling it or anything like that, but just by overseeding. Um, mowing very short this fall.
Yeah.
And then, and then overseeding with the desirable, uh, seeds that we want.
They may have cut once, maybe twice a year at the most before we were there. And I think it encouraged a lot of unpleasant things to go on there.
Mentioned Ms. Holland, uh, just for the record, she is the head of inland wetlands, the town employee. Uh, are there any, I know there are wetlands on the property, as, as stated.
Yes.
I'm wondering how, uh, whether, uh, further applications from inland wetlands may be necessary for this. Or any issues regarding wetlands because of your farming plans, or?
It's very specifically to that point, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Um, to that point, we showed all of the activity and all of the areas that we're planning on doing, which you have on the, on the map there. And, um, received her, her okay, uh, considering that we're without, we're with it. Pretty much everywhere within a fifty foot, but outside the fifty foot setbacks of where the wetland areas are. Um, that one meadow in front of the bees, which as Richard just said, was not really tended to very well in, in the past. That is a wetland area, um, but she was fine with overseeding this area here. Uh, but that, um, that can, she said we can oversee that as long as we don't till. So we have her blessing on that.
Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple more questions. So the, um, you mentioned the vegetable garden and the greenhouse. Um, both of which, in order to. Harvest the, the rewards of both of those, you're going to need to create a path somehow, either for tractor or for a pickup or something.
No, you could see the.
How's it gonna work?
Another one, it would be.
Is one right there.
Be on the road, the dirt road, basically. Lovely dirt road.
Am I reading, there's a dirt road that goes down to there?
Yeah.
Oh, it's just not shown on the site plan?
Yes, that, that road that you see on the picture is the road that goes to the, would be the vegetable garden.
Around that bend to the left.
Oh, is, I see. Is this, uh, coming off the main drop, main entrance off of Brookwood? You go to the left and then that road goes all the way around?
All the way around like a park.
Got it.
Part of it is paved and part of it is this dirt road.
Got it. Um, uh, one more question. You're showing a two hundred and fifty foot offset from the goat paddock. Which is encompassing two of the adjacent neighbors. What is, Mr. Rucci, what is the two hundred and fifty foot?
So, um, anytime that you're proposing to put chickens or goats, you have to show that you're, uh, all the neighbors within two hundred and fifty feet. And you need health department approval to, um, um, place those particular animals in those particular areas. We could not do that as of right.
Yep.
So we'd have to go, that's just the local health department rule, and I'd have to go talk to Jen Iles, and I talked to her briefly about it before, and she said, well, when you guys are ready. Come and see me, and we'll see whether or not this is something that's acceptable or not.
It doesn't prevent you from putting the.
Does not prevent, you can get a waiver from the health department. Farther than two hundred and fifty feet, so long as you can prove to her that it's not gonna be something that's a health hazard to your neighbors.
Okay. Um. The, uh, the location of the paddock for the goats, um. Coming off of the cul-de-sac, ob- obviously, we have to, um, be careful of what we're approving and how it affects the adjacent neighbors. Um, there's a couple of houses downstream from there. I actually used to live on Brookwood. I was right next door to your property back when Paul was there. And, um. That, um, that area, there's gonna be a, a curb cut, I guess, coming into the.
There's a curb cut now into that area. There's a curb cut there. I mean, it was used, obviously, at some point for some sort of animals, I think. Maybe that was where the, the cows were initially. I'm not really sure exactly what was there before.
Cinder block building, frankly, and it was, I'm sure it was some kind of an animal building at some point.
Right.
And there's a large, um, area adjacent to it that was their flower cutting vegetable garden, which is fenced.
And will, in order to help screen the view of the goat paddock from the, the turnaround circle, will there be additional landscaping or planting or anything? Going in there?
There may be. You're not necessarily approving the goats tonight. I mean, although it could kind of, in a weird way, go around you because the health department could. That's correct.
Want to, that would be great, but.
I mean.
No, but it's funny, cuz they can't see it now. The, the vegetation that's there.
Right.
It wouldn't be cutting down.
Okay.
What screening exists there will remain.
Will remain.
Um, so I'm, we're not gonna expose anything more or build larger than that or closer to the road. Than that cement building that exists there now.
What's the timing on the goats arriving? Any idea?
Look, we would like to get this. The seven goats that are family members now, we would love to get over there right away.
Uh-huh.
With no idea of expanding beyond them as a business, but as our own pets.
I mean, I, I, I think it would be appropriate if the commission felt that if, in fact, the goats were ever approved. And moved over that, um, significant or additional screening, and maybe the town planner can make that decision as to whether or not. What's there today, cuz I'm not showing you what's there today, so it's hard for you guys to. Make that decision as to whether or not what's there today, because I'm not showing you what's there today. So it's hard for you guys to tell. Um, that, that will be, you know, significantly screened or. You know, the building is not able to be seen by the road, you know, however you would want to um, pose that particular condition would not be a problem. I mean, in the end. Um, privacy is very important to them anyway for the applicants. So. There's a lot of screening that exists. There's a big fence there now. There's actually a barbed wire fence there as well. Um, around the property and existing barbed wire fence. Um, it's pretty, it's pretty well screened right now. I mean, you can see if you really walked up to the fence and tried to look through, but for the most part, it's pretty screened.
I remember. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that it's not just goats, but livestock is a broader term. Uh, because it could be sheep, it could be something else, and you end up sort of the same place, or perhaps even more so if it's a larger animal. So. A livestock issue. Goats is a, you know, one of the choices on the menu.
Is it? Can I ask questions?
Of course.
Commissioner, so uh, is this uh, gonna be qualified for a uh. Tax abatement on the, on real estate uh, under uh, twelve dash eighty-one M?
Yes, we will, we will request that from the assessor's office. In that particular process, you have to file an application. So it's. It's kind of strange. You have to start farming. Then you have to come to P and Z to make sure that you actually are allowed to farm. Then you can go to the assessor and ask whether or not you can get an exemption for farming. So it's sort of counterintuitive the way that you have to go about doing this. You actually have to start farming first. Then we have to get permission to say it's no longer residential, it's now farming. And then the assessor makes the ultimate decision as to how much they give you. As far as a break goes from, from taxes itself, but it's his decision.
Fifty percent?
I'm sorry?
Is it fifty percent?
It's all, it's his decision. He makes a decision as to whether he thinks it's uh, just like he makes a decision on open space, you know, if you had a big piece of property, he gives open space a different. Uh, calculation based on that versus an improvement like a pool or pond, or I'm sorry, a pool or a um, structure. But it's totally up to the tax assessor's office. And you have to make application to him. Uh, there's a whole form that you have to fill out. Um, and then it's up to him as to whether or not he approves it. Um, but he can't approve anything unless the planning zoning commission says that you're allowed to use it as a farm.
So along those lines, I have a, a question. Um. Given that there may be a financial incentive to, to do this as a farm, and there's been a lot of conversation this evening about the benefits of this property being kept open. Is there any plan to protect it long term in terms of deed restriction?
Well, once you have a farm, you have to keep it in a certain. Uh, we need to keep it in a certain.
I believe the farm has to operate for as much as ten years before um. If, 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 for example, the gears sold the property in nine years and the new owner said, oh, we don't want to farm anymore. All of that property tax uh, revenue, whatever it was, would have to be paid back again. So there's, there's, you actually have to keep the farm going. There'll be a lot of. Incentive to keep the farm going for whomever uh, owns the property. I couldn't remember how many years it was.
But, but I think this is Commissioner Chris, as far as protecting it, you know, I think you're discussing an agricultural easement to. Uh, limit as far as structures on the property, where they go as well as uh. You can't subdivide anything anymore.
Yeah, I was talking about in perpetuity. Obviously, it sounds like this becomes perpetuity over time if you continue to farm it.
Yeah, most people, I mean, when I've had people come to me with a lot of, I've had other people in town come to me with this exact question, and that's, it's the ten years. I couldn't remember exactly what it was. That kind of dissuades them from, from doing this. And, and there's some work involved with it too. It's, I mean, you are doing work and. And for the rest of the neighborhood, um, you know, they're getting the benefit of open space. And they, we're getting the benefit of less houses and we're getting the benefit of. Water and all the things, not a lot of infrastructure coming in. I mean, it's, it's great to live next to a land trust property. It's great to live next to a, a property like this or the one down on Wheat Street. Um, it certainly makes the neighborhood, I think, you know, more valuable. From an open space perspective.
Mr. Ruchi, this is Mr. Cassavant. I'd, I'd like to challenge that a little bit. I, I, what we've heard tonight. Is that there's, the property is fenced, it will not be public. There won't be any commercial sales, there won't be any access. Um, I, I, I'm thoughtful about your representation that there's community access similar to. Other available communities. I mean, I don't object to this as a concept, but as a notion, I mean, it's beautiful property. I understand the owner's desire to farm this, but I'm. I, I, I'm intrigued. I, I recognize the ecological benefit of this, but I don't see any open space benefit for the community. Help me on that.
Well, if you were going to put in up to ten to twelve houses on this particular piece of property, you would have to. Do a tremendous amount of infrastructure. You'd have to bring in pipes, water. Pavement, you'd have for the rest of the neighborhood, at least twelve garbage trucks every day, every week. You'd have many more um. Uh, uh, landscaping treat crews coming in, electrical service. I mean, there's all sorts of things that. No, don't exist right now on this property, which does, which do, which will help the neighborhood and does help the neighborhood right now. Um. You know, the infrastructure in and of itself will, you know, you have a lot of wetlands here, so you'd be able to get approvals to bring in a road. Um, there's thirty-three acres, it's a two acre zone. I mean, you're not going to get fifteen lots, but you could probably get ten to twelve. Lots on that particular piece of property. Um, and I don't think that's, I, I think that the benefits of the open space. And the benefits of um, providing this community with uh, whether it's rest, whether it's mushrooms for restaurants, whether it's. Vegetables for the food pantry, um, or whether it's just a nice quiet area near you is, is significant.
Thank you. Couple.
I, I would like to um, respond to Mr. Cassavant before I ask my questions of Mr. Ruchi, but. It just occurs to me, I understand what you're saying, what is the benefit to the community, but I just would. Like to point out that of the sixty or so, sixty-one land trust parcels. Only about ten or twelve of them are open to the public. So open space is considered to provide a benefit to the community. Whether or not it's open to the public. That's uh, an assumption I'm making. So. Uh, when, when you, when you say what is the benefit of open space, I don't know if public access is necessarily a requirement. I just wanted to point that out. My question for Mr. Ruchi is um. You mentioned that there was one other farm. Proposal that we had seen, but I seem to remember more than one. Could you describe some of the other farms in New Canaan? Because it occurs to me that um. There's been, there was the Great Lama controversy. Was that a farm? I don't know, but you remember the Lama, the Lama, you know, that was controversial.
I get, so I.
Then we had one on Owen Oak where they said, oh, he's, he's legitimately doing a farm and everybody loves farms, right? The neighbors did not love that farm on Owen Oak and complained about it being too intensive of a farm. So could you remind us?
No llamas.
No llamas, okay. It's very good.
What's the other one? The llama?
Llamas are very good guard animals.
The alpacas too. No alpacas, no pigs, no cows.
Just remind us what precedents.
You know what? You're absolutely right. And I'm dating myself because I had forgotten about those.
You forgot about the llamas.
I do want to say that um, Owen Oak is not a farm. It's a animal.
No, not that one.
If I'm just saying, if you were talking about the neighbors at Owen Oak, uh, but it's not that one.
Different one.
Okay.
No, that's the old Wayne property, right? The one next to the Wayne property. That's right. I forgot about that. Um. Yes, I mean, that particular farm was really an active farm though. I mean, they had tractors there every morning. I had, I mean, I had neighbors I represented against that farm.
Right.
So because it was really loud and um, I think they actually changed the rule in New Canaan because of that at the time. So um, that is what.
Produce.
Well, yeah, it wasn't just too much produce, but it was the noise. I mean, it always comes down to noise, right? I mean, in the end. I mean, this particular, so that was one I remembered. I remember that was really being used by Tim Brown's brother as an actual farm. And it was early in the morning and he was there late at night and he was doing a lot of things that obviously in a quiet neighborhood in the four acres, even though they were in the four acre zone. Was disruptive. Um, you know. That was a two acre, well, I think Wayne is six or seven, seven acre property. I can't remember who owns it now, but um. You know, I think that's different than this particular one, because you just have so much open space now. You have thirty-three acres of space here and where we're. For the, where we're showing these particular um, beds that we're doing, other mushrooms are really to low impact type of. Activity. Um, we're not doing anything like moving hay around or, you know, tilling the, the ground. And in fact. I'm not sure we actually could do a lot of things just based on the amount of wetlands on the property. We would need to go back through wetlands to get that stuff. And when we talked to Kathleen, um, when she looked at this, um, the la, uh, early on, because it always goes to her first. She basically said, listen, you know, you need to be fifty feet away from all these wetlands and you got to make sure all your stuff is and. Uh, all the things that you're planning on doing and, and that's what we have done. Um. I don't remember the llamas. I remember reading about it. I wasn't involved in that one, so I can't tell you what that was, but. Once again, I think those are, you know, louder animals. Um, I don't think goats are that loud, but I don't really know.
So my next question is, um, you seem to suggest that any changes, they have to come back. But what it seems to me is that once it's designated a farm by state standards and we approve of a farm, it's either a farm or not a farm. And it doesn't matter how many mushrooms you grow or how many bee, bee uh, bees you keep. Um, so. What triggers your coming back to us, making a change?
No, you're right. It, once it's designated as a farm, you do get the benefit of, of a lot of farm, farming type of activities, okay? Um, in this particular case though, we are still on a special permit with you. So the special permit in and of itself, if we violate that special permit, that special permit can be withdrawn from, from farm use because it just. That's, that's what we, we're sitting on right now as far as that goes. Um. As far as animals go, that's a health department issue, and that's always a health department issue. If you guys want to put in, if anyone on this board wants to put chickens in or have goats or whatever. You wouldn't necessarily go in front of this particular board. You'd go in front of the health department. Um, so that is something that we could do. If we have buildings that we want to put in uh, to the property. Um, it would depend. If we're putting in the residential area, we'd have to come back and see you. If we were putting it somewhere in the farm, you still have to confirm with setbacks and wetlands and those types of things. I think you get some leeway on that. From those, but you, you do still need to get permits. I can't just go start putting up buildings. It may not come back to you though. In the farm area. You're absolutely right about that.
So my last question is, so the intensity of use is generally what causes neighbors to say, hey, wait a minute. Whether that's the kind of animal, the amount of animals, the amount of machinery, the kind of noise. So what I'm trying to understand is. Um, at what point, if the, if it becomes problematic in a residential neighborhood. Would you have to come back in front of us?
Probably wouldn't have to come back in front of you. We would probably be sued for nuisance. We would prob, I mean, it would be a private property. Issue um, from neighboring properties. That would probably be the, the best way for them to get something to stop. And they would be able to sue us under a nuisance. They would be able to sue us. Um, you know, if there's some sort of trespass of. Animals or of the like. I mean, this particular area is going to be completely fenced in, so I don't see anything with that particular aspect of it. Um, but yeah, once you put the farm in, uh, I'm sorry, once you give the farm use, there's not a lot to come back to this board on. Unless we put things in the residential. Area. Cause there, remember, there's still four and a half acres of residential. So if anyone wants to go in residential, we got to come back. But from the farm use perspective, now, once you approve for farm use, we're able to use it as a farm.
And if I, and I assume that, you know, this is a good plan and the applicant is honest and he's going to build what he says, but the fact is, once it's designated a farm. It's a farm for at, at least ten years. And when he sells it to the next person. Could be more intense use and we have nothing to say about that, right?
That's correct. That's possible.
I had a question on this, this Commissioner Chris, could you get the map up again, please, of the property? Maybe outline clearly what the, where the wetlands are and the setbacks. So I assume that's off limits.
Yeah, so.
And so I'm wondering what in, and you have a um, uh, kind of a homestead cutout. Which I assume is off limits too, except I don't know, maybe you put a few carrots in the ground, nobody's going to care about, but.
So it is important to clarify, it's not that it's off limits, it's just if they one inside that fifty foot buffer, they would need to go to the wetlands commission.
Right.
So it's not off limits.
True, but I, they tend to be fussy on this, so I'm assuming that may be a, a tough sell to the wetlands commission.
So probably the easiest thing to look at is if you look at sort of these pictures that are, have been taken out. That red line, like for instance, this particular picture that is up, that's the wetlands line. So it's, it's hard to see on the, on the main map, which is always.
Exhibit A shows it.
Okay. If I can make that any bigger, but here you see, if you start here, this is the red is this wetlands line. Right? So it's sort of, it, you know, we have a big pond also on this property in here.
Hmm.
Okay, and then here's sort of the red line that goes all the way around. It goes a little bit into the four and a half acres. This, this piece right here is the residence. Okay, the residential area. And then you see there's wetlands all up in here, even though this is farm. I mean, honestly, there's a lot of wetlands in and around the neighbors. So you're not going to see a heck of a lot going on there to Miss Carrie's point. Obviously, you can get approvals to do certain things. Um, but these are sort of the wetlands lines.
So you have thirty-two acres, about how much is wetlands? And buffer round numbers.
Including the, including the buffer, um, it, it, it's. I don't, I don't have the exact acreage here on, on how much is wetlands, but the way that the wetlands runs, it pretty much renders a lot of the areas. You, I don't think you could ever see anyone developing this in terms of a, a big, heavy duty farm. It's, you know, it's, it's not going to be that kind of a place. It is perfect, exactly perfect for what the gears are looking for, which is to do some farming, to let their kids grow up around growing things. And um, uh, and also by, by, by farming, um, let the land work again. Uh, help offset the costs of, of maintaining such a huge piece of, of property. Um, by, by selling some stuff to local, local and, and to, to Arthur's point here. The other benefit, of course, is we all get to eat, you know, freshly grown um, mushrooms and, and uh, and honey.
Have us over for a mushroom party?
Now, please mute yourself on Zoom.
Uh, for. You had mentioned ornamental hort, hort, so it's horticulture. That means either you're doing it in pots or you're doing it in the ground and then digging it up and doing a B and B.
So, so plugs of, of, of grasses, for example, in the scanthus, a hosta, we do small, small hosta. Leave them in the ground for three years, come back in, in, in that time. Dig them up individually, divide them, put half in the pot, the other half back in the ground again. Simple as that. And then a company like mine, um, would, we would buy sixty hosta, you know, and something like that, so.
I had a final question on the, uh, it's on your um. Statement, special permit and site plan, and says the site is approximately thirty-two acres, of which. Four and a half will be residential, non-farm and twenty-seven and a half remain woodland, wetland, meadow and pasture. Two will be in cultivation. Well. According to my math, twenty-seven and a half and four and a half is thirty-two. I'm not sure where the extra two acres are coming from.
I'm sorry, what is the?
Which slide are you on? Sorry.
Um, it says.
Put it down wrong.
Put it down wrong, okay.
I mean, there's thirty-two acres, four and a half of which is uh, for the residents. So if I did the math wrong, that's because I'm an attorney.
Now the math is right. Four and a half, twenty-seven and then two.
Yeah, I don't, I think it was a two acre zone is what I was trying.
Yeah, that was the extra two. What's the extra two? Yeah, I, I assume.
No, it's a mistake.
Subset of the twenty-seven and a half.
Oh, it's a mistake.
So, yeah, just staying, any, anything else, Mr. Chris?
No, I'm, I'm done. Thank you, Mr.
So one final question, as far as, a- again, we're talking low impact, medium impact in, in terms of this proposal. As far as the goat paddock is concerned in that area, I have two questions. Number one. The, is there an existing structure that will be reused or will it be, there were, will there be a new structure that we will be built? And how big will it be?
There's an existing structure there now. There's not a new structure that's being planned.
Okay.
In that particular area.
Um, existing structure will be reused.
Will be reused, correct.
Okay. And then the second question is, is there flexibility on the part of the applicant that that area? In exhibit A, which is that lime green area of the paddock and the pasture, I guess, for the. Uh, not the pasture, but the paddock for the goats. Is there flexibility if that as an element were to be moved east away from the road? Some number of feet to add additional landscaping buffer? Is that possible?
Yes, we, we, there's certainly enough room there for us to be able to, to put a screen of, of green giants or whatever we need to behind that. Absolutely, there's plenty of room there.
Is there, is, what would be reasonable for the applicant? Is it ten feet, twenty feet? Is there a num, because obviously they're such a small drawing, it's hard to scale anything.
It is, and it, it, this seems like a very small. It is. And it it this seems like a very small scale. It's actually it's actually big, big area. There's actually plenty of room right now, right? There's a fence there and there's room between that fence and then the the new perimeter deer fence that we could plant that whole area and you could get trees in there quite easily.
I I I'm just thinking in the future, you're going to have a fenced area for the goats to wander in pasture, right? And how close that and how visible that will be to the road.
Right.
If there is the ability to slide it back and add screening so that it's not visible from the road, that would go a long way.
Okay. We'd we'd be we'd be fine screening the uh the goat paddock.
I mean, look, you pretty, we don't have a picture of it yet. I think you'd see, sorry.
Microphone.
I'm learning. Yeah, I you can't really see it, but it it's from that road. There's two houses that are off there. They can't see into the property now. And where the goats would be, the existing fence we expected to use, you can't see anymore with the goats in there than you can see now. But if that became a problem, we could move in a fence.
Okay.
And screen it. That wouldn't be a problem for us. Frankly, we don't want to see anyone else outside either. So we've been planting a lot of stuff along along our perimeter.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions?
Yeah, that's her.
No, Mr. Chairman. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard that's in the room? Oh, sorry, Mr. Rucci, anything else?
I I was just going to say that um we think that the farm is uh the proposal in the farm is um consistent with plan of conservation development as far as uh getting back to the community, keeping the property in its natural state. And we believe it's such a low impact that um it's helpful both not only for our client, but also for the neighboring particular neighboring properties, and it does meet the special permit criteria, um which I've outlined in my narrative to you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the public in the room. Is there anyone in the room from the public that would like to speak?
Oh, sure. Later. Okay.
That's one of the neighbors for the record. Um, anyone on Zoom land that would like to speak from the public?
Someone's raising their hand.
I would like to speak.
Yes. Can you state your name and address, please?
This is Carolyn Suzanne. And I'm on Brookwood Lane, thirty four Brookwood Lane. So down um the little accessway. Um, I have a question about the fence height that's currently along Brookwood Lane that was just erected as well as the barbed wire. Um, that's in front of it. It's very unsightly, and I'm wondering if that fence height is of legal fence height, because I was of the understanding that fence height was to be of only six feet. Can someone from P and Z? And the other thing about that fence is it's a blind corner now. So if you're turning up the up Brookwood Lane, you can no longer see um oncoming cars. And from a safety perspective, I worry about the height of that fence.
I can answer that briefly. So we replaced the fence that was already there, that fence that was there that is barbed wire and fence, uh, we put behind it, and it's the same height. So that fight, that fence, you're correct, is not supposed to be the height it is if I was going to build it new today. But since it's already been there for, I don't know, twenty years or so, meaning the fence in front of it, you can still replace it as of right at that particular height. So that's why that is there. Notwithstanding that, um, we're certainly. I think it's like seven feet. Notwithstanding that, we're happy to take a look at that corner to see whether or not there's a real a real issue there. That obviously wasn't our intent in putting the in putting the the house up. I mean, unfortunately for the for the gears, they have had um three to four break-ins to their property since they've been here. And that was always, that was actually something that was more of a safety issue. And I'm sure um, you've seen that we have a lot of cameras up now. Uh, we're not sure what's going on over there, but that was another reason for safety that that a new fence was put up um behind the fence that currently exists.
I this is Commissioner Chris, a question for Ms. Karen. Now, you can be grandfathered in if it's an existing condition. The issue is, when does the grandfather kick in? Is it?
Sure, so.
And so forth. So I'm not sure what the case is here for fencing in this area.
So for all legally nonconforming structures, which I will classify fences as structure in this case, anything that's existed for three years or more, no legal action was taken, is allowed to stay as of right. And there's been significant case law since Hurricane Stan Sandy that stated that if you take something down that was legally nonconforming, you have the right to build it back exactly how it was. So um Attorney Rucci had reached out to me in July, um, just asking this question generally. And, you know, we had a discussion and based on the information I was given, I told him that if they're replacing exactly what's there, they're allowed to put it back up. And we don't issue permits for fences. So if there's a violation, we only hear about it through complaints because we don't issue permits for fences.
But it it it's not the same fence. It was a barbed wire fence that was a chain link fence, and now it's a solid fence. I understand, no offense to the gears, that they want their privacy, but it it's not the same one is not, it's a solid fence and replacing a chain length fence. And this rusty old chain length fence is still there with the barbed wire and now a solid fence.
Okay, so that information was not represented when we had this brief email exchange. Um, it is supposed to be replaced like for like. So this is the first time hearing of this. Um, but it likely should have just been, you know, chain link replaced with chain link since there is a.
Well, I'm not.
But.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I think you you can still replace a fence with a different kind of fence, even though the fence is in the same place. I think the issue is the height of the fence more than it's the actual.
So I mean, we can look at this separate of this. Um, yeah, I'm the first I'm hearing of it, and it would have been addressed regardless of this application coming in or not. So I don't I don't think it's necessarily.
We should treat this separately.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for, um, I'm sorry, I forget who the the name of the.
Uh, it's Carolyn Suzanne and from Brookwood. Yes, if you could just look into it further and, you know, I understand they want their privacy, but if we could, if it means just whatever's safe for that corner and for our kids who are riding bikes there, just as the gears kids, children might be riding bikes there one day, it is a blind quarter. And I would love it to see that it's safe and that the fence height is what is legally allowed. And it's not one for the other. There was a chain link fence there, and now there's a solid fence and a chain link fence there. And the chain link fence is in poor condition. And if that that should have been replaced and it wasn't. And that's all I can say. Thank you. Sorry.
No, it's not a problem. This is Richard. I don't know. I can't see. Can you see me? Or you're just hearing?
They can. They can see you.
I'm actually in Kauai, Hawaii, so I can't see you. Um, but uh, nice to meet you. Sorry. Um, but we just would love that just for the safety of all our kids who are riding bikes and walking dogs. Our street is very populated with dog walkers and just for the safety of everyone on Brookwood, just would love for that corner to be safer.
No, I hear you completely, and I didn't realize that. But I will look at that corner. And if it's a problem at all, I'll get that down to six feet. Okay?
Thank you, Richard.
Absolutely. And I look forward to meeting you. Okay?
Me too. Have a nice day.
Uh, may I ask a question?
Sure. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, sure. It's Rob Freeman. I live at one thirteen Brookwood with my wife Melanie Harris. Uh, I want to welcome our new neighbors. Um, we do live right at that corner that um our our neighbor was just speaking about. The uh, the concern we have is along similar lines. It's not about the fence specifically. It's about the intensity of use of the road. Uh, one of the special things I'm sure for uh for our new neighbors and for all of us is that uh Brookwood Lane is a dead end road. Um, and as Carol pointed out, it is one that is heavily uh walked um and bike ridden um and not heavily trafficked by vehicles. Mr. Rucci uh spoke about the freight, used the phrase moving things in and out. Uh, he used that a couple of times. Um, and also the phrase intensity of of use. And I believe I believe that that David also said, uh, you know, that that the owners would have a pickup truck uh for their farm. Um, the concern that I think we and and I believe some of our neighbors who have been communicating about this have is the intensity of use. I'm assuming that most of that traffic would go in through the um the entrance and egress um around the cul-de-sac, uh, which is now being used as a construction uh entrance and was previously unused by the prior owner. It seems to me that if there are wholesale cutting flowers, there are wholesale uh vegetables and fruits, those are two different vendors. We also understand from the application that there may be um ornamental gl- grasses and flowers uh for sale to the landscape industry, that would be a third use. Um, and of course, they also spoke about goat cheese and goat milk, all of which sounds lovely. I I say with all sincerity. Um, however, each of those would presumably require different vehicles, different vendors who would be coming to the property uh to collect those items. Um, uh, at least four different types. I don't know what else for the beekeeper or for, you know, the goat keeper. Um, and assuming that that traffic is all going the entirety of Brookwood Lane from Country Club all the way to the end at the cul-de-sac, it impacts every home on Brookwood Lane. And and that is our primary concern. I do want to be clear um that the points that Mr. Rucci made and that Mr. Gear made uh about the the their intent to utilize this property in a beautiful manner uh is something we respect. I certainly uh didn't want to see the property get subdivided uh and never do want to see it subdivided. But I do worry about people with young children or grandchildren, uh, you know, who are uh walking on the road every day. You know, and having pickup trucks and people from outside the neighborhood, uh, you know, in and out all day long. I don't know that the commission can do anything about that. I do want to voice the concern as you consider uh the application. And also for, you know, for for our new neighbors to understand as they think about uh the utilization of the land, but also the utilization of our shared road. Uh, thank you very much.
Sean Keating here. If I can address or allay some of your fears. So various different vendors and and things like that don't come into the property to pick up their produce. We will have one farm manager, maybe a laborer or two laborers, and that is pretty much the extent of our of our of our activity on the on the property. Those people will handle all of the produce. We, for example, will spin our honey once or twice per year. And the the lady who has been maintaining the bees um comes in, if you know where the main gate is to the gears property, there's another gate to the left, so not the not down where that where we were talking about the goat shed, which was that that construction site entrance that has been temporarily used for that. That is not anything to do with the farm. That the rest of the farm uh activity will happen from the main house entrance and that little other entrance that goes through that that area. So there won't be the kind of traffic that you think, nor will there be the kind of heavy duty coming and going. Perhaps you're you're worried about. It's a it's a very, very low maintenance type of uh operation.
So so to for the benefit of the commission as well as the public, everyone asking, having lived next door, I'm familiar with it. So there's three access points onto this property. And if you look at the site plan, there is the main house, but there's also a guest house to the north on that sort of little widget of a piece of property. That at that guest house has an entrance. Then you have the main entrance into the property with the gates. And then you have the rear entrance at the end of the cul-de-sac. So can you explain how much use each one of those will be getting from the farming component of what you just described?
The farming component will be almost exclusively that cottage, that guest cottage to the north that you were talking about.
So the first entrance coming into the guest cottage.
Exactly.
So the amount of traffic flow from the farm manager, whoever else will be there other than tending to the goats possibly?
Correct.
That'll happen at that front entrance and not go all the way around the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Okay. And then right, because from that entrance, they can follow that existing path all the way around the wetland.
And that perimeter road that already exists in that section. So they can have access to the whole entire property from that entrance.
Got it. Does that answer your, uh, I'm sorry, the neighbor from Brooklyn?
Yeah, Rob, right, Rob Freeman. Uh, yeah, let it it the the only uh thing I would point out is, and I I just wanted to be clear that even though that uh that answer is satisfactory from the perspective of where my own house is, um, uh, most of the people who walk on Brookwood start all the way at Country Club. Um, many of them, in fact, live on Country Club and come to Brookwood to walk and walk their their dogs. They also come from Indian Rock and and so forth. So that stretch from uh and it's the mailbox at seventy eight Brookwood that you're referring to, that entrance uh to to Country Club is a heavily uh pedestrian trafficked area. And again, I I I ask that the commission and and our and our neighbors take that into account.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Chris. A further for the question on the um I guess, compliance with labor laws. So you could have employees or subcontractors on site. And so you have to have certain amenities. You have to have a toilet for them and so forth. I'm not sure what facilities you would have for that. Uh, whether you're going to get a porta potty for workmen, as you see, or there are other facilities in order to comply with state and federal labor laws. Um, what's, what do you have to do and what might you need that's not there?
During the construction.
Yeah, I mean, we we will have that now. I mean, we'll obviously comply. Yeah, we'll always obviously comply with any whatever those regulations rules happen to be. I'm not sure what they do at the other um project that I that we had approved before. But that's obviously something that we have to do. We'll have to pay payroll tax. We'll have to, you know, do all those things.
I remember if the memory serves in the one on Weed Street, um, it's really two separately, uh, two separate parcels. They're owned by the same person. The one in front is maybe what, two acres or acre and a half of that very large house? And they, remember, sorry, remember, they purposely put a um half bath in that has a door outside. You don't have to go inside the dwelling. And that was for workers would would use that. So I assume there are labor laws that will require something, which is where I'm going with this. And really whether that will require additional um uh structures on the property in order to comply with this. The second question is relating to one that Commissioner uh uh Angle brought up properly, I think, is that, given the size of the property and the low level of coverage, many types of structures you may intend to build, I would think you can probably build as right because you got so much space. And there's nothing else there. So if you were to, let's say, to want to put in a barn or a hoop house or a take and pick, uh, depending on where you put it, okay, it can't be one foot from the property line, but depending where you put it, you could just do it, apply to the building department and pay your hundred dollar fee or whatever it is, and you're off to the races as long as you meet your other building code issues, I assume.
Yeah, that's correct. That is correct. I mean, you still have wetlands that you have to deal with.
Yes, you have wetlands, you have borders.
And there's a lot of wetlands.
And everything else.
You still have all those that you have to still comply with. Um, you know, you could in uh you'd need a septic system if, in fact, you were going to put bathrooms in. I mean, there's all sorts of obviously checks and balances from other departments, just not this one.
Th- this um this um property is unseptic?
Yes.
And a well?
Correct.
Would it be several wells?
Several wells?
Yes.
And just a septic, the a septic?
Uh, no, there are right now two septic on the property. And we're actually in the process of putting in a new code compliant septic system as well. We haven't gone through that project yet, but they're doing renovations on the house right now. So we're going to eventually be going for another septic system on the property.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think, can you can you clarify? Is there a limit to the number of accessory structures? I mean, it's a benefit of having thirty two acres that you can build accessory structures. But there's a limit to the number of.
So we had this issue over on Valley Road. Um, you need a zone unit for each structure. So you would have to make sure that you had a particular zone unit for the structure. So I mean, we would have, you could technically build a lot of allows, but you still have the issues with wetlands. You still have the issues with septic systems. You still, I mean, it's not that easy. And plus, who wants that? I mean, practically speaking, like what, why would you do that? If you're going to do that, you might as well subdivide. Like, I mean, we're talking about an applicant here who has no interest in doing anything like that. Um, he's trying to move forward with what he's done in the past.
Applicant likes goats. I'm just wondering what the practical limit is on the applicant for how many goats he could house, you know? I'm I'm basically wondering.
Tiny. That's the health department.
So I just wondered whether whether Mr. Chris was right that there's al- already a practical limit, you know, and and you're saying there is, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think there is. And there's also, like I said, a nuisance value to this as well. I mean, you know, regardless of what um happens on the scrub, if it's something that's affecting the neighborhood, neighborhoods can always bring it up in action against this particular applicant. And they'd have to defend it, just like any property owner for nuisance trespass, whatever. No, of course not. Let's hope not. I mean, that's not the intent. I mean, the intent is exactly the opposite here.
We want to, we want to, we want to rule upfront correctly instead of relying on the courts to.
No, I understand. I understand that.
That's why we ask all these questions.
I understand that.
The main issue with goats, as I've found, is a buck. It's a different animal. It's a male. They're different. Commissioners, anything else? We're done.
Uh, the these are all castrated.
Yeah. Commissioners, anything else? From the public uh on Zoom land, anything else from anyone?
Can I reassure uh Melanie?
Can I ask one question about the goats and Mr. Gear? Maybe you can comment since you have goats. You know, there's a lot of dogs in our neighborhood. I don't know if you have dogs. You know, there's a lot of dogs in our neighborhood. I don't know if you have dogs. Have your goats ever been attacked by coyotes? We don't have that many sightings for some reason on my end of Brookwood with coyotes, but I'm just wondering with bringing in goats. Are there, is there a greater risk of coyote attacks?
Well, I think.
Carolyn again from Brookwood, thirty four Brookwood Lane, sorry.
Hi, how are you? This is Richard. The goats we have in North Salem right now, we've never had an issue. I mean, we are fenced in North Salem. And we have the deer fences. There's been no predators that have gotten into the animals at all, the chickens or the goats.
Is your entire, is the entirety of the property fenced right now with a deer fence?
Yeah. Yeah, and we just put that in. So it's a brand new, solid, never going to break fence. But I ju- I just want to say to to all the neighbors here, I mean, this, I mean, you write to ask these questions. We ask the question ourselves because we want this place to be quiet. We don't want the disruptions, believe me. This is the we, the species of of mushrooms that we've chosen is really quiet. The shiitake's we have a really quiet and they only have to be harvested by hand very occasionally. We had, there's a caretaker there now, Jeff, who has a pickup truck. And it's our pickup truck. He's been using one the entire forty five years that he's worked on that property. I don't think he's bothered anyone and probably there's going to be no more coming and going with pickup trucks than what you've seen now. Because we don't want that either. Uh, I know there's a lot of building of trust in this process. But I'm probably the most private and want quiet person you will ever meet. So I expect that we'll be great neighbors with each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Richie?
No, thank you.
Okay, this application is closed. I'm sure. We'll take a two minute bathroom break.
What happened to seven forty five?
Everyone. Ready guys? Continuing, we have the next application in front of us, which is item number three. Uh, one sixty four Smith Ridge Road upon application of James Huder, executive board member, authorized agent for the New Canaan Field Club. Owners for a special permit approval pursuant to section three, four, C two and six, eleven, B five to allow the installation of specialized lighting on four tennis courts in the one acre zone at one sixty four Smith Ridge Road, map thirty nine, block forty one, lot one fifty five. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address.
Uh, yeah, so my name is Jim Hutter. I live at one thirty three Woodland Road. And I'm here as a representative of the New Canaan Field Club. I'm an executive board member there. I'm currently the treasurer. Um, I'd like to thank you all for the time. I know that the field club has been here recently. So I appreciate the opportunity to present again on behalf of myself, the membership of the club and our board. Again, appreciate the opportunity. As mentioned, tonight I'm asking for special permit approval to add lighting to four of our ten tennis courts. Um, I'll present the details of the project. Hopefully that answers a lot of your questions, but we'll leave time at the end for anything that you might want to talk about with regards to the proposal. So just a quick recap for the field club, we are a member club that provides racket, aquatic and social activities to over two hundred and seventy five New Canaan families. The club was founded in nineteen fifty seven and now has grown to include ten tennis courts, five paddle tennis courts. Thank you very much for that. A wonderful pool, snack bar, both a tennis and paddle pavilion, two residential homes and a padel court. Uh, we sit on just over eleven and a half acres up one twenty three, just to the south of the property that you were just speaking of. The tennis courts in question were actually on one of the site plans. As for the project itself, we're asking you to approve the installation of a tweener LED light bar system on two sets of two tennis courts. Um, I have more information about the tweener system, uh, in particular on the next few slides. But as for the project itself, it requires very little site work. The units themselves go on top of the existing fencing. We require no building permits as I ran it by Brian Platts last month. We will need a a permit for some electrical work to get the the systems hooked up. So what is Tweener and and who is Tweener? It's not a well-known name. Tweener itself is a lighting brand created by a French company called NLX, who's who specializes in uh, in arena lighting, basically for sports. Uh, recently, NLX recognized a gap, a gap in outdoor athletic lighting technology. They created Tweener as a more functional, easier to install and maintain and less obtrusive option to the historical high stanchion lighting that you see on places like Dunning or, you know, baseball fields around town. The tweener system, uh, it's comprised of light bars, uh, LED light bars that are typically attached to an existing fencing around sport courts, tennis courts, basketball courts, could be anything. They do have kind of specialized or unique fixtures if required, but in our case, we will be using the existing fencing around our courts. The light bars extend just over the length of the playing surface, again, sitting just about ten feet off the ground and focus the vast majority of the light that they produced downwards and onto the court, creating very little light pollution around the playing surface itself. For the tennis system in particular, there's a smaller secondary light bar on each side of the court that directs upwards and inwards. So you can see higher balls nearer the net, but those don't extend all the way out to the back. As a ball there wouldn't be playable. Today, NLX has provided has provided over sixty of these systems at forty plus locations in the United States. There's very few of them in the Northeast. In fact, there's only one in the state of Connecticut. It's at a private residence in Greenwich. There's plans for a second one at a home in Ridgefield. Yes, I thought so as well. That said, we did, as a board, myself and two other gentlemen, get to go, we got to go see the system in use in Greenwich. We were impressed with it to the point that I'm here tonight asking to to get approval for us to use it as well. Which courts are in scope? So these courts were actually, as I mentioned, um, on the last site plan. This is our property. The triangle that you see just over the squares that I've written in is our tennis pavilion. Uh, that's at the north side of the property. Just behind there is actually eighty two Brookwood. A couple of reasons for picking these two sets of courts. Our ten courts are organized in five groups of two. These courts, in our opinion, best minimize any disruption to our neighbors. There's ample screening and space between our neighbors on either side of the property. And secondarily, these courts provide the easiest way for us to get electricity to the systems and makes that work all the much easier. This is just kind of an overhead view where I I use the tool on the P N Z website to to get you to the feet to our nearest neighbors. Um, so you can see we're over two hundred and seventy feet, basically, um, to either side. Uh, and there's a
It it's the two courts that have arrows leaving them?
That's correct. Yeah. So there's there's four courts total. Um, I'll go back up just real quick. So if you can see, there's five boxes. From the lower left, that will be our court one and two. To the north of that is three and four, to the right of that is five and six. Seven and eight are in the upper right-hand corner, and then below that would be nine and ten. We're asking to light courts, uh, three and four and five and six. This slide here. Sorry, I took these pictures myself. The top row is actually taken from the second floor of our tennis pavilion. So that's a raised elevation that you're looking at. Uh, the lower ones are from ground level. The pictures on the left are looking at one twenty three, so to the eastern side of the property. The pictures on the right column are looking towards Glen Drive. As you can see, there's a lot going on behind the courts. To our eastern edge, there's actually screening and additional tennis courts between the courts in question uh, and our neighbors. And then there's a good amount of screening to the Glen Drive side. Importantly, why are we asking for this? In my time on the board at the field club, lighting has come up in one way or one way or another with our membership, uh, basically every year. Um, it's something that folks are, you know, want, um, and I and I think is important. Old methods of lighting courts or the light that you see on paddle courts where they're thirty or twenty five or thirty feet in the air is not a reasonable option for a club like ours that's situated in a residential area. I do believe this new technology that sits much lower and provides a much more focused light source is a reasonable option for a club like ours. These lights will provide anywhere from sixty to a hundred and fifty of extra, extra minutes of playing time, depending on the month for our membership. This is very important, especially for members who commute. Um, especially for members who work from home and then tend to children in the afternoon or or at nighttime. You know, we've grown a lot as a club in the last four or five years, and a lot of that growth has come from dual working parent families. We have a lot of moms who can't partake in a lot of the women's focused activities, which generally happen in the morning during the week. These courts and this ability to play past sundown would give a lot of opportunities to a lot of these folks that they don't currently have. Secondarily, this brings our tennis offering in line with what we already offer for paddle. We have approval for lights. We have regulations and restrictions on that um, that work pretty well, and we'd be adhering to the same script for tennis. I mentioned the playable minutes previously. These lights will not make our tennis season any longer. We're going to have the same number of days. The geography and the climate of New Canaan don't allow us. These lights aren't going to fix that problem. So our courts aren't going to open any earlier and they won't stay open any later in the fall, but we will get extra time each day. Potential concerns, um, you know, the club is in a residential residential area. We understand and fully expect our neighbors to have questions and possibly concerns about the projects. We spend a good amount of time going back and forth as a board on on the merits of this project to our members versus the concerns our our neighbors may have. Um, and we think it is a good risk reward and and a good worthwhile project. I've reached out to all of our neighbors as we're we're meant to do. I heard back from two, Mr. Wayne Seltzer, who lives at one oh five Glen, uh, Glen Drive. And Mr. Tim O'Sullivan, our neighbor to the east at two thirty Smith Ridge, both reached out to me. I had long thirty minute plus conversations with each of them, uh, explained the project, explained the system, sent them all of the documentation I've provided to you guys. Uh, also sent them all of the tweener information that I have, sent them to the website. I left those conversations feeling pretty good. Mr. Seltzer in particular was pretty complimentary of the system itself, thought it was clever.
The Glen Drive?
That's correct. He's on Glen Drive. Yep. And and he had no issues. Um, he's lived in his house, he said fifty years. So we got him beat just by a little bit. You know, I think the two biggest concerns with the lighting system is is light, first of all. Um, and to speak to that, the system itself is designed to create very little light pollution. The one, the unit that we saw in Greenwich, um, like I said, isn't a residential neighborhood and it's actually in the guy's front yard. You know, his neighbors didn't come out and and yell at us when we were playing on it. I'm not sure that he had no qualms about it from his neighbors, um, but it is there. It is pretty impressively designed. I mentioned it, the the paddle cutoffs, ten o'clock is what we've got for paddle. We're open to to make that maybe a little bit earlier, but certainly no later. Um, and again, we want to be consistent with our paddle offering. I've added this, it's not the best resolution here, but this came from NLX and one of their engineers. It kind of gives you an idea of what the light dispersion will look like for having this on the four courts. You can see it's it's very, excuse me, concentrated on the courts itself and it dissipates quite quickly. And there should be very little ambient light reaching any of our neighbors. Oops, sorry. And then lastly, for noise, um, we would have additional use. We would adhere to, again, all of the paddle regulations that we have, no loud music, everyone off the property by ten P M. Again, we selected the two courts that are kind of furthest from our neighbors. So we hope that that helps to mitigate any extra noise that there there would be created from from play after sundown. We would not have pickleball on these tennis courts at night, so that came up. And we would, we would not offer that. So it would just be tennis. I've, you know, kind of gone through the whole thing. This is, um, I I added these kind of last minute. This was taken last weekend at a tournament in Pennsylvania that Tweener sponsored and lit. You kind of get an idea of what the system can do. You can see the area around the courts is still dark. The light on the 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 courts themselves look great. They're super playable. It's a neat feature, and I think it would set the field club apart. Um, it's quite additive. Um, and it's something that that folks have been itching to do and technology's kind of allowed for it. So that is the short pitch for our project. Um, I'm sure there are questions and I'm I'm happy to answer them.
Let me start it off. Page, what page is this? Page nine of your presentation? If you want to bring that up on the screen, if you could. That's that. Yep. No, no, you were there. Back, 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 one more, that. So that image shows the tweener system, but on the fencing, there is either opaque or semi opaque screening that is attached to the fencing in addition to the tweener lighting. Is that the solution that's going to be provided here?
On our courts, we wouldn't have it necessarily on this. The tweener system only goes on the side of the courts, not on the baseline.
No, I understand that, but if you look at this image, that that mesh, let's call it a mesh screening, which helps to mitigate any light bleed beyond the perimeter of the court.
It's a windscreen, yeah.
A windscreen. Will that be installed on any of these courts?
We hadn't considered it mainly because the fencing that we're using on the side of the courts has breaks in it for people to walk in and out of the courts. We don't have, it's not a cage, um, where there's an an open door. So the the lighting system is going to require us putting a couple of extra fence poles in the brakes in our fencing. So there's not going to be fencing the entire length of either side of our tennis courts. Um, at the edges, we certainly could consider it.
Understood. So obviously the lighting concern and the light bleed as far as we're looking at it is in, uh, relative to the concern of the neighbors or potential concern of the neighbors and visibility of an illuminated court. So that could be that type of screen to mitigate the light bleed could be added to the west court. Uh, to the west elevation of the west court.
Certainly. If if that was a stipulation, that would be the one to do it on.
Right.
Because you're correct. On the east side, we, there's four other tennis courts in between where we're looking or two other tennis courts between the system and the road, the system and our neighbor. That westernmost fence could be created as a complete fence because you don't really walk. There's no one coming from Glen Drive into the tennis courts from that side. So finishing that fence and putting a windscreen on it is is not problematic from a, from our our standpoint. If that was a condition.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
This is Commissioner Chris. There's one question. Beyond the light installation and maybe attachments of the light to whatever they're being attached to, anything else going to be built besides wires to bring the electricity?
We'll have to add, so there's about a thirty foot gap. Call it a forty foot gap in our fencing on both sides of each of these courts where people would normally just walk on and off the court. We're going to have to add fence poles uh, at twelve foot increments with a top bar crossed it uh, to then attach the light bars to. Um, and that's the only site work that we would need outside of the electrical work.
How big around are the light bars? What's the diameter?
Uh, I, the actual, the specifications of everything are in the the plan. They're no more than this big. They're light. You could pick them up yourselves. They come in twelve foot, ten or twelve foot sections and you can carry them quite easily.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman's question.
You, you said that it would not be hard to add a screen on the Glen Drive facing edge of the court.
It's doable, certainly. It doesn't impact the flow in and out of the tennis courts. Currently, there's a picnic table that folks who are playing on the court, we would call it court three, would sit and, you know, in between games.
Between those two courts.
So it's to the east, it's to the western side of all of the courts. So the courts are close enough that you wouldn't want to sit in between them during play. So if you were in between. So if you are, um, in between court four and court five, there's a walkway, there's a pathway that tracks down from the tennis court to our pool. And there's a, a tent there and there's some sitting, uh, seating area. Um, if you're playing on that court three and you need a rest, there's a table over there, but we could manage that.
How do you light when you have the two courts as you do that are kind of paired next to each other? How do you light the middle part if there's no fence there?
Uh, so I asked the same question, cause the one that we saw in Greenwich is a single court. And I was curious, are they strong enough to light two of them, and they are. Um, it's really, it's quite impressive, so they're a little bit more high powered than you, what you would have if you just had a single court, they throttle them back. Um, but they cover the entire thing, I think there's one photo in here. This one here, that's a double setup that just has two light bars, uh, on either side of those courts.
And why are you only doing two sets of your courts and not all of them?
Uh, one, we don't have unlimited budget for this project. Two, we wanted to be conscientious of our neighbors. Um, so, you know, on a Thursday night or Tuesday night when we have league matches, we typically have eight courts going. Um, and it's lively, it's not, not loud, um. But we didn't wanna have that kind of setup, uh, for, for late at night. And we think that the use of four courts, I mean, it's, it's a good amount of people, right? So, um, it, it's sixteen players and if we ran two night sessions or we were able to, you know, have people on at seven thirty and nine o'clock and out by ten, it's, it's a nice piece of use.
I have an observation and a question, Commissioner Swedlow. Um, so I, I frequently play on, on lighted courts, I might, and the lights are one, at least one and a half to two times taller than this is. And that's for the convenience of the players, not for the neighbors. But in those situations, the neighbors are not an issue. How did you represent this to the neighbors, since you've got no feedback or very little feedback? I'm wondering exactly what did you tell them?
Uh, the letter that I wrote to them explained, uh, kind of the rudimentary parts of the, the system itself. I also sent them all of the documentation that I presented to you and directed them to the Tweener USA website, which has a bunch of, uh, it has videos and, and documentations for the system themselves. Um, one of our neighbors on Glen Drive is a, is a member of the club and they were kind of maybe an ambassador behind the scenes, I can't be totally sure of that. Um, but the two folks that did reach out to me, um, you know, again, I, I, I left those conversations really pretty comfortable that they understood what we were asking.
I looked at the website, it's a, it's a very ingenious way of portraying what this is. My only question and it has nothing to do with the neighbors is what affected will have other players, but that, that's a different.
So I, I hit, well. I first heard about this about two years ago and I was skeptical, um, that it would work. Um, I, I started to learn a little bit more about it, I had the sales call from my guy Nick in Florida, um, very persuasive, nice gentleman. Um, but again, it's his job to sell this to us. What did it for us was being able to go see it in person and I stood in the middle of it. And I went there with our president who's six foot eight and I said, John, I'm gonna throw this ball in the air, can you see it? And he could, um, we didn't have tennis rackets with us, which was a very poor oversight. Um, but you know, we threw a tennis ball back and forth and it was comfortable. Um, it was, it was honestly really neat and it's what kind of sold us on, on going forward with it.
Okay, very interesting, thank you.
What is the, um, what is the color temperature on the lighting?
Pardon?
The color temperature on the lighting, how, how yellow is it, how white is it? Any idea?
I, it didn't hurt my eyes when I sat with it, the, the specs and I will plead ignorance to being an expert on lights or anything light to do other than what I've presented. Um, the specs are, are in the application.
I'm looking at their website with the specs and they don't mention col- color temperature and the reason I bring it up is the, the higher you get in color temperature, six thousand and five thousand and above, it looks super white.
Okay.
And looks very industrial, right? Um, it'll have a different effect on your players as well. Whereas if it's three to four thousand Kelvin, then it's, uh, it's, it's a yellower, softer light. Probably better for the players, but definitely aesthetically better for the neighbors that might see a light.
Okay.
You know, across through the woods or across the compound from Smith Ridge or wherever. It, it's something I deal with at Irwin Park because they've got these two huge floodlights that are super bright white and makes it look like a, you know, like a, a gravel yard.
Sure.
Across the street.
I, again, I, I don't have the specifics for you, I can, I will ask for them and, and look into it. I can say that when, um.
There's probably a recommended temperature that.
Sure.
They recommend.
Okay. When one of our, when one of our board members drove up, I was at the house in Greenwich before he drove up second and it was already dark and the lights were on. And I said, what did it look like? And he goes, you can tell there's something there, you're not exactly sure and it kind of looks like a little bit of what you would have seen in a sixties alien movie, um, where there's, you know, kinda like a low level light. And then it dissipates very, very quickly and you're kind of, you know, left thinking, what is that? But you have to actually be within, you know, he said that he was one driveway down before it kind of figured out where he was.
Gotcha.
Well, it's a, an excellent question though. Because, um, so, something with a very high Kelvin will be very irritating to the players and to the neighbors.
Sure.
But LEDs, um, can be adjusted, you know, and so they are adjustable. So I don't know if it's an issue right here, the website does not mention it.
I'll ask, yeah, I'll certainly ask.
Which is a little peculiar.
I appreciate that.
Commissioners, any further questions? Dick or Art, any questions?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Yep. Is there anyone in the public in the room that would like to speak to this application? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Um, my name is Donald Curran, I live at twenty-one Glen Drive, I'm on the south border of Field Club. Um, couple comments I wanna make, first of all, this is a fabulous club in New Canaan. Um, I completely endorse a lot of their activities. I'm not a member there personally, but I have a lot of friends who, who are. Um, I have played paddle tennis there, I have played tennis there before. I think it's a, I think this is gonna be a great project for the club. Um, I, I was a little surprised by your comments, sir, when you said you don't care about the neighbors, you care more about the players and what the lights will look like.
No, no, that's not what I said, that's not what I said, I care very much for the neighbors.
Okay, so what, what I think, a couple things here. Um, you know, we are affected by the paddle tennis lights. Um, when the, when the trees lose their leaves, um, we, we do get affected by it. But I play paddle tennis, um, but I, I, I want this light, I'm for this light project that, I want that to be on the record. But what I do wanna know, uh, note is two things, when the first project was built, what was it, seven years ago? The original, uh, the new clubhouse? Um, yeah, yeah. Myself and one of the neighbors, Tim Sullivan, were promised some screening in trees, right? Um, they did fulfill the screening, um, by my garage, so I don't see the three, they put in three arbor vitias for me. And, um, for those of you that drive up and down Smith Ridge one twenty-three every day, uh, you'll know it took me about a year to get my fence repaired. Um, and now that fence is in and that is a nice block. It also turns what I would say on the north side, six or seven sections between my property and, and the field club. And originally I was supposed to get like one or two trees there. So I'm hoping that at the end of this project, that's something that you all will consider, um, is fulfilling that obligation. I know Mr. Sullivan was promised some, some trees, um, and I'm surprised he's not here, cause he said he was going to be. Um, but, um, in closing, I just wanna say that, um, I appreciate you all, uh, listening to this. Um, I think the field club's a wonderful place, I wanna endorse the project. I would love to see the lights go off at ten o'clock at night. I have a fourteen-year-old at school, um, when all those five light paddle lights are on, it actually is pretty bright. In fact, the paddle tennis lights, in my eyes, are far more concerned than this lighting. This lighting is very unintrusive, paddle tennis lights are pretty bright. So, um, that's it, and those are my comments for today, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just to be clear on the just to be clear on the landscaping concern of what was promised during the clubhouse fit out and what was actually installed. If we can look back at the approved landscaping plan, if then, and if something's missing, we'll gladly work with the club to reinstate all that.
It's, 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 it's an ask, not a request, how's that?
Happy to look into it.
That'd be great.
Just for the record, we're in the process of buying a lot of trees right now, so adding two or three more.
There you go.
Um, and getting in them in the right spot is not going to, uh, not gonna be a problem, we just gotta know where to put them.
And, uh, we have a dog that goes crazy when the fireworks go off. We have to like lock her up, put a towel around her head, everything else, but it's a great tradition, it's a good club. And, uh, I think it's really good for this town too.
We don't have fireworks.
Yeah, you do.
No, we don't.
At New Canaan Field Club?
No, not in.
Country club fireworks.
Not in four years that we've, that, not since I've been a member.
Okay.
No problem.
Actually, the fireworks of the country club are this Sunday, so. Thank you. Is there anyone else in public, eh, on Zoom land, uh, that would like to speak to this application? It's a no, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Uh, item number four, um, this is upon discussion and consideration of planning zoning commission to amend the zoning regulations dated June sixteenth tw- two thousand and seven, amended July fifth, twenty twenty-three to amend. Excuse me, section, um, two point two definitions and three point three permitted by accessory use.
I have it up.
This is the old one, sorry, you have it up on the screen?
Screen, um, it's also on the website, um.
Yep.
People wanna pull it up, so essentially, um, in the most recent legislative session, um, a new statute, um, or an edit to the statute was, um, approved where, um, group daycare homes, um, which are daycare facilities that provide, um, care to seven to twelve children and are licensed by the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood, um, operate in residential zones. They've essentially taken away the right of municipalities to require that these operations receive special permit approval from planning and zoning commissions to that, um, we can't require anything more than a zoning permit. And this statute becomes effective October first and, um, we're required to report to the state, um, that our regulations are in compliance, so the change is essentially edit our group daycare home regulation to clarify that it must be licensed by the state of Connecticut Office of Early Childhood and then just remove from our regulations that a group daycare home must receive a special permit approval and that it is allowed via zoning permit.
I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, why are you making them, since the statute is effective October first? Why are these regulations effective October second, shouldn't they be effective October first?
October first is a Saturday, so we have to post it, um, at a certain time, um, which we can't, or October first is a Sunday, my apologies. So we're just having it effective October second, um. So we could make it September thirtieth if we want to, which is, we can't make it effective on a weekend because we're not here.
I think it should be effective, uh, by October first, because of the fact that, uh, statute, we're not in compliance for a day. If we make it effective October second.
Okay.
It's a simple enough change, we make it effective the Friday prior.
Yep, that's fine.
This is Christian Chris, I had a question, so I'm reading the, the, uh, law, it says no zoning regulation shall treat any family childcare home, which is defined term.
Yeah.
Or group childcare home, so family childcare home.
Is zero to six children, we already allow that as a zoning permit, so it's just our group um, family daycare that we're not in compliance.
Fair enough, and just that family is one to six, group is seven to twelve and there's another term for thirteen and.
Correct. The statute didn't address that, yeah.
Does not address those, the larger, largest ones. Thank you.
Sarah, can we still, I, I don't know if we even do, but, um, can we regulate parking or do we regulate parking? The number of parking spaces, uh, these types of facilities have?
We can, um, I'm.
Do we currently?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, I can check the regulations right now, but, um, I'm not sure, off the top of my head.
You say, it says we can't in a manner different from single or multifamily dwellings. No zoning regulation in a manner different from single or multifamily dwellings, uh, section A.
Well, we do regulate multifamily.
Yeah.
For parking.
Yeah.
Correct. Uh, single family, not to my knowledge, but.
No, well, we regulate garages, we don't regulate parking.
So I mean, um, if we wanna add a parking component, we don't have to approve this tonight, you know, we, we could approve it at the September meeting, I just wanted to get this on the books.
No, I, I don't, I just was curious because it seemed to me if there are ever issues with this type of use that probably the issue would be the number of people coming and going, so I was just wondering if even though we can't restrict the use to come before us for a special permit, if we still had some oversight or you had some oversight through the regulations over how much parking and how much traffic. That was really my only concern and, I mean, I think, to me, this could be approved as is and we can figure that out.
But I, I think it's fair, the parking concern is fair and, um, you know, the parking requirement, you know, if it's in a residential zone, the argument is gonna be, well, we can park on the street and, you know, uh, walk our kids in or whatever the case may be, but that's that will impact circulation on the road and impact neighbors much more than being able to stipulate that you know, any required parking for the operation needs to be on the site or something. You know, we'll, we'll let the lawyers wordsmith that, but I would wait on voting on this until September and let Ira and Pete chime in on this.
So they, they chimed in on everything.
They have.
Yeah, so they're, they're fine with it as is, they didn't bring up parking, I didn't bring up parking, so, um, but I, I can.
I'd like to get parking in there.
Um, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we do the parking separately, like the next meeting? Well, we can vote on it in the next meeting. Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll abstain from voting on it now, on this amendment now. And just voted it at the September meeting once we craft some language for the parking component.
Question in favor of my ignorance is Commissioner Chris, do we have any of these in town now? I can't think of any, but. Mr. Commissioner Enger is nodding, but I, I'm trying to think of any.
Thinking of, uh, I'm thinking.
A group one.
That's in a residential zone, it has to be. And.
Residential. This is, I would say, I'm gonna use the term here, group childcare home in a residential or multifamily zoned area, do we have any?
Yeah, so, uh, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think the, on Old Stanford Road, um, on the corner, um, on, on, on that ninety-degree corner on Old Stanford Road is a yellow house and I believe they run a childcare or have run a childcare facility. And so.
Yeah.
Um, so that's an example of a busy state highway uh, with limited parking on the site. And, um, you know, and I, I know that there has been concern because that's a busy road.
Yep.
And with limited sightlines, so it's not necessarily strictly a parking concern. But, you know, with, uh, cars exiting and entering the site. Um, yeah, so, a- and I know it's come up, you know, when that was first licensed to be, you know, whatever it was. Anyway, so that's, that's the only example I can think of. I know that because it was so tightly regulated for a long time, a lot of the childcare facilities had to go to the churches. That's why you have First Presbyterian Nursery School and Saint Mark's and Congregational Church. And so I think, eh, you know, I was gonna wonder whether you could comment on, um, in your conversations with Ira. I, I know it's hard for me to ask you to get it into the mind of our legislatures, but what exactly precipitated this uh, change in the regulations? Did they, did they say that, uh, there were too few childcare facilities because you could only locate them in a church and that's why they did this?
So I'm not sure, I, I don't even know if Pete and Ira were paying attention to this, um, this was brought about, the, um, Health Department Director is the one that notified me of this change, so, um. I don't know why. I don't know why this got changed. Um, it may it may very well be, um, what you just stated, the legislator doesn't think there's enough. Um, facilities, but I'm I'm not sure. But I also with the parking, I just pulled it up. We have a regulation. For a single family dwelling with home-based business. We don't have any sort of requirement specifically for daycare centers, but. That requirement is two spaces for the dwelling unit plus adequate parking for employees, clients and visitors screened by landscaping from a budding residentially zoned parcels.
That's pretty good language to add to this.
So if it's all, I mean, it's already a single family dwelling with a home-based business, I wouldn't. I wouldn't change.
Who determines what's ad- you determine what's adequate? I mean, cause it's pretty.
Well, does.
It's vague, so yes, I would.
Does daycare home group that we're redefining qualify as home business? Yes, right?
Yeah. I don't see why not.
So then technically, technically, we're covered.
I think we are.
We can change the language in September.
If we need to.
Pin in a number.
I think it's adequate.
I think it's adequate, so. It, sorry, can you read it again?
Sure. So it says two spaces for the dwelling unit plus adequate parking for employees, clients and visitors screened by landscaping from a budding.
Yeah.
Residentially zoned parcels. So they still need a zoning permit that I would have to sign off on. So I would be either myself or Steven, our Assistant Zoning Inspector. We would be going to the property before we issued to make sure that, okay. They're gonna have eight kids. Is there space for eight parents to pick up and drop off?
Right.
Is it gonna be a nuisance? So.
I think.
I think we're covered.
Yep.
Yep.
Hmm.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Commissioners?
I still think we should, uh, ask Ira to look at it, even if we pass it now.
They already did.
Sorry?
We, I already sent it to the town attorneys and they were fine.
Oh, I'm saying.
He signed off on it.
Issue of, uh, parking.
We can check with them.
Yeah.
I mean, if they.
I don't think we have, I I'm not saying we have to wait.
Yeah.
People seem satisfied, but you know, if the lawyers think there's a problem, we can correct it next time.
To ask the question and well, to state it a different way, we can vote on it tonight, and if Ira or Pete have an issue with it, can come back to us.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. This item is closed. We'll come back to this in a minute. Um, dropping into a regular meeting now. Deliberation on the applications we've heard tonight. Uh, we'll start with, uh, twenty-one Grove Street. This is the weed into Rio space with the additional racking in the back. Um, commissioners, any comments, questions, concerns?
Chairman, I move we approve the application.
Do I hear a second?
Let's go.
Um, I think I heard Mister, uh, Mister Turner first, so we'll give it to Mister Turner this time. Um. And any conditions or stipulations?
The only condition we think of is that, um, maybe every two years, the, uh, top bits be cleaned off of any, you know. Trees or branches that fall on and so forth. Um, but that's the only one I could think of. Uh, other than that, they seem to be well-built structurally. I I'm unaware of any public safety issues surrounding them. They've been used.
They're very.
Uh, they are going essentially to, as opposed to putting pallets on grade and then putting stuff on top of the pallets. You have these, so it seems to be. Better than what we have. Uh, parking doesn't seem to be an issue, at least from my mind. Um, those are, that's the only possible stipulation I would have. Um, you know, kinda go either way on it.
Okay.
Yeah. I think I think it's a, uh, a big improvement. Currently, it's a, it's a little messy, to say the least, and, um. Uh, it it, uh, will clean up that area and make it much safer.
Okay. I'll call to vote. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
And Turner.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Art Casavant.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Paul Knag.
Yes.
Tom Ben.
Yes.
This is approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, next one, next application is eighty-two Brookwood Lane. This is for the application for a farm. Do I hear any comments, questions, concerns, commissioners?
This is Commissioner Chris. I make a few comments. Um, it was mentioned about goats and other livestock. Um. The applicant is correct that, uh, goats are ruminants similar to sheep and, um, cows, and so dealing with. And they're also smaller animals, so dealing with, um. Uh, manure issues is is pretty minor. They, uh, it tends to dissipate fairly quickly, and if it's composted, it gets composted and. Returned to compost very quickly, and they say they compost it. So I don't see this as a particular issue unless you have two hundred goats in the property, which you don't think they're gonna have. Um, they're correcting saying pigs are completely different because of the diet that pigs have versus ruminants. So the goat issue I don't see as a big issue, and, uh, anyway, it's in the health department's. The bull's in their court to deal with it, and I just have to assume they're competent people and will deal with it in an appropriate manner. Um, re- regarding the, uh, other types of livestock they have, which is honeybees, they're fairly unobtrusive too. They don't keep up, don't take up a lot of space. Uh, they do naturally forage up to maybe three miles from their hive, but that's just what honeybees do. Um. Part of the, part of nature. I don't see those as, uh, issues taking a lot of space and they're not ugly and anything else. Um, the logs for the, uh, mushrooms, uh, full disclosure, I've actually done this myself. And essentially, you just take a log, you drill a hole, you inoculate it with some spores, you put some usually food-grade wax over the end and you just wait a year and. You know, the mushrooms come and you harvest it generally once a year. Um, probably once a year is all you can do, given the climate here, uh, usually doing the spring or it's usually doing the fall and the spring you collect them. So and again, fairly unobtrusive, essentially you have logs that are in a raid in some sort of pile. You know. Your property with logs, we, I think we all have that in our property with trees down and so forth, so I don't see this as very unobtrusive. Also, there's concern about intensity of farming. I mean, if you look at the property, given the issues you could have with the setbacks. And also the, uh, wetlands, which are joining the middle of the property, once you say, okay, that's basically out of, out of bounds. And there's not that, and what's on the, um, called the homestead of the house, there's not that much land left to do anything. So even if they wanna do intensive farming, they can. Frankly, and if it's really intensive, you know, frankly, I think the wetlands people sort of being a lather on that one. So I don't think that's really gonna be an issue. So this is fairly low impact. Um, and so I would not see this. I certainly see this as, I personally see this as consistent with a plant of conservation development. It maintains open space. Um, the types of things that are considered being planted, you know, apple trees, pear trees. You know, people have these on their property now, haven't caused any any trouble. I mean, I have blueberries on my property and they're not. They're, they're native here, so I really see this as a fairly unobtrusive, um, action. The only possible challenge would be the. Uh, issues regarding, uh, livestock. And again, that's Health Department, and I think they'll probably take care of that. So my bias is towards, uh, approving the application.
Would we, um, two things I'd like to bring up, would we consider limiting the number of livestock at the the goat den or the goat paddock? They mentioned seven. We wanna set a, uh, a limit on it, and if they go above and beyond that, they would have to come back to us. Is that possible?
I don't think we can, um, cause you know, if this were just a regular house, you know, no farming involved. Zoning wouldn't review it. It's just all a function of the health code, and if it's a health hazard, having too many animals.
I believe we did it on Owen Oak Ridge. The the most recent application where they had the pigs and sheep and goats.
That wasn't a farm, Mr. Chairman.
That was an animal rescue.
Animal rescue.
Animal rescue, okay.
Those aren't different set of rules, I think.
Gotcha.
But I mean, goats, I mean, really, uh, they don't take up that much space. And it's also a type of livestock. I mean, you can have cattle, which can be large or small, depending on the breed you go for, but they don't seem to have much interest in this. They're fairly.
No.
Unobtrusive.
I don't think they're gonna have a huge farm, put it that way, but.
It's a hobby farm.
It's a hobby farm, but as belts and suspenders, is is there a way we can put a. A ceiling on it before there's a sense of checks and balances of, before it would get too big? I don't know if there is.
I think the health, the public health code is the checks and balances. If there are too many animals, it would be a health hazard.
One goat's a pet, twelve is a farm.
So the other question I have, and I know they have setback issues associated with the house relative to Brookwood Lane where it comes up alongside the house. Is that side where the cul-de-sac is, is that considered front yard for that property?
It is, yes.
So in going back to my question about moving the goat paddock and providing adequate buffer, et cetera. This is a two-acre zone and a front yard setback and two acre zone is forty-five feet. What do the commissioners think the, about, um, requesting that the goat paddock be placed, so it's inside that front yard setback of forty-five feet? It's probably close to that even now, given the conditions there.
So I mean, administratively, I know that we've permitted paddocks to be. Very close to the setback for horses and such that.
We have permitted?
Yeah, um, just administratively, that's not even come before the commission. I can think of a couple of farms and the two and four acres, and there are horse paddocks. Only twenty feet from the property line where, cause it's a fence, you know?
Yeah, no, I understand.
Property line, so.
Well, it's a fence that's gonna have animals right up against it.
Yeah, but so I mean, then then you're going into the debate of are uses allowed to be in a setback or not? I know there have been issues with. Patios, you know, should they be in a setback, should they not? So.
Yep.
If you're saying animals can't be, I I just don't know if we're starting to get into.
That's fine. I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
The, it's a valid point.
Wouldn't it be the buffer that's more important?
It is.
The actual distance?
It is. I'm just trying to find a way to craft the language so that we make sure that there is an adequate buffer there. And I know. From the applicant's statement, and I I know the property as well, and on Brookwood, there is existing. Vegetation and trees and bushes and everything there already separating. The only thing you really see is sort of a haphazard little back entrance off that road, but. Knowing that there's neighbors that go down that foot every single day, you know, the, um, you know. I'm sure they're gonna wanna be screened from goats.
Mister Chairman, I think especially.
Problem here, uh, that, uh, not just the number, you raised the number of goats. But, you know, and he said he wasn't gonna do pigs, he wasn't gonna do horses, he wasn't gonna do.
Things.
Uh, cows. Uh, I I I think he's saying right now, I could do goats and that would be it. That would be the animal. Uh, should, should we say, okay, you could do goats, uh, ten goats or seven goats, whatever you wanna say, and. And if you wanna do other animals, you gotta come back?
I don't know, are are we allowed?
So just get, like, we're getting hung up on the goats, but my understanding is that that wasn't even part of the application. That was just in the future, they may bring their pet goats. You know, they haven't represented that they're bringing any animals. Other than that, which may or may not. I mean, it sounded like it was going to happen because they're.
I I heard Mister Gears say, yeah, we'd like to bring those seven goats because they're part of our family.
I I also think that, didn't we earlier discuss the fact that once we create this farm, they can do anything they want? And and I will go back to the wetlands issue. I presume many of you have seen the Supreme Court ruling. Which is going to eliminate, according to the federal government, sixty-three percent of existing wetlands, which was effective and promulgated today. I mean, I I think there's a whole lot of things that, you know, once we approve this as a farm, I think the notion of regulating animals and other things is gonna be well beyond where we're going.
Oh, oh. Yeah, I would concur with, this is the Commissioner Chris, I would concur with Commissioner Cassavant, is that. The the number and type of livestock is really gonna be a function of the Health Department, which is gonna say. We can't have what's referred to as a California dairy, which is five thousand milking cows on a space of ten acres. Uh, it's making a cow prison. Um, they're not gonna have that here, and to the extent you just have an open area and an animal wanders up to the fence line. The animal gets to do that. If you wanna put a shed up on the fence line, that's a whole different conversation. You can't do that because you're putting a structure within a setback. And so they have plenty of space to put structures and they probably will have a goat shed. I mean, look at, uh, the. The, um, you know, the donkey shed in the, uh, nature center, we have that. Uh, and so, um. You know, I I'm not sure we can really regulate that. Frankly, it it comes down to other other people have jurisdiction for that, but. I mean, broadly, just the ability is a practical matter of this farm, doing a lot of stuff is gonna be severely constrained because of the house. Because of setbacks and because of wetlands. So there's only so much space they can do anything. So so why don't we? Why don't we add the condition to the approval, because I'm assuming we're going in that direction? That, uh, adequate screening be provided between the goat paddock and Brookwood Lane so as to fully screen view of the goat paddock.
Hard to say in the se- sex that it meets the approval of the, uh, neighbors and. I mean, I, you know, because they're saying it's already sufficiently screened. If the neighbors think so, and she thinks so, then. We don't need to add screening, right?
It's not needed.
That's fine.
I I I actually think that this is, uh, Art makes a very good point. The the essential question before us is, um, farm or not farm? And I was actually contacted before this by by residents. Typically, w- we are, um. We encounter, uh, overuse questions and, uh, intensity of use questions, and so that's, that's what we're trained to do, you know, look at screening and other ways to mitigate that. But the questions I got were surprising. They said, uh, farm designation is a very special designation and allows the applicant to get. Uh, tax breaks and to use their property in a way inconsistent with the neighborhood. And they said, what's, and they said theoretically, um, what's to prevent, uh, all of us from saying, I want that those tax breaks? I'm gonna plant a whole lot of flowers and call it a, uh, a cutting garden and call it a farm. And so they said, be very careful giving out farm designation. That's what I hear Art Cassavan saying. And and he's right, and it's and it's weighing on me. So when I listened to this application, I thought to myself, is this somebody who's trying to get over on the system? And and make it, call it a farm when it's not. I think this applicant is, in fact, making a farm. It's not a farm in the traditional sense, but he's he's working many different, uh, angles to work the land. And provide the produce to others, so it meets the test in my, in my mind, but I take the responsibility very seriously. That's what I hear Art saying. We can't just, uh, in giving this, we have to take this responsibility very seriously that we don't give the farm designation to just anybody. You have, um. A particular intensity of farming that you have to meet in order to get it. I think the applicants met the test.
Can I, can I ask a question on based on what you just said?
In a second. So two things, I totally understand your concern on the farming issue. The problem is what you just stated, is that you talked to neighbors.
Yep.
About this application. And that.
I didn't talk. I I heard a letter. I heard an email.
Okay.
And I'm happy to recuse myself.
Yeah, we're gonna have to ask you to recuse yourself.
Okay, I'm happy to.
Yeah.
I I've been on, I've been on farms in the area. I've been on the one in this large one in Ridgefield. It's about over a hundred acres. There's also a hundred acre one in Wilton. I've been to them frequently. And you have livestock right up to the fence line. It's just what livestock do.
Yeah.
These are sheep mostly, and that's just it. And, you know. People don't mind driving by and seeing sheep sitting in a paddock.
Yes.
It's cute. People like it, and they don't really cause any trouble, so.
I don't think we're gonna have a problem.
I I really don't see that, given the geography, given, um, uh, being boxed in by setbacks and given wetlands, which are sort of out of bounds, there's really not much you can do except fairly. Low-impact agriculture, which is what's being suggested here, you know, and so they're gonna plant some peach trees. I mean, this is not the end of the world. I say, hope they do. My own view, but I I just, I I I see the negative externalities of this as being very minor. The only ones I can think of really. Is that they will have to buy a pickup truck and they're gonna have to load it up with stuff and haul it out at some point, because it would have product they gotta, they gotta remove from the property. And they gotta figure out anything they need to do be, to be compliant with labor laws, given labor they have, but that's someone else's problem, not ours.
That's means and methods for them to figure out.
So I had a, a point.
Yes.
Of clarification. Through a minimum, sorry, a minimum number of acres. One needs to have to, uh, comply with the farm status.
So there is one for the state and for the tax assessor, but there isn't one specifically for zoning.
But what about the state and the taxes? What what is the, what what is, what are their minimums?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but the Farm Bureau did send in a letter supporting that this could become a farm. Um.
It used to be, and this Commissioner Chris used to, I remember it was in New Jersey, it was. Had to have ten acres and had five hundred dollars in sales at the farm gate. Now that was going back a few years, and you're easy gonna make it off this.
Okay, I had a follow-up to that as well.
Yep.
The, um. I think the point being made that. Not so many people are that concerned about not seeing wildlife in an area versus.
in an area versus seeing wildlife in area. I think they're more concerned with their own privacy. And they said that towards the end and it was very compelling that if anything, they don't want people looking at them.
Right.
So I don't think we have much to worry about here.
No, I don't. I just, my my point was just putting some comment or, you know, condition in there about screening and it could be to the satisfaction of the neighbors and the town planner.
I have no problem.
That's all.
I just, I just.
Yeah.
Don't think that this is much of an issue.
No, I don't think so either. So do I have a motion?
As Commissioner Chris, I move, we approve the application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any conditions on that motion?
I'm not making any, but if someone wants to suggest something, I'm willing to hear.
Second is from Tom Benton.
For no conditions?
On that one, the fence issue is decoupled.
Separate matter I will handle.
Yep, I would request just some language in there about the screening to the satisfaction of neighbors and the town planner.
I I would suggest, well, exactly, screening where?
At the goat paddock.
Okay.
We need to just clarify that a little more because um as we'll discuss on a different item later, um you know, saying to the satisfaction of the neighbors and the town planner may not always agree, so.
What's that was, that was recommended.
Yeah, I mean, how about this? Uh I will uh include in that a condition that the area on the application on on the submission, which says goat paddock, though there are no goats there now, but on the record, that uh the um area within um five feet of the property line the the called five, uh ten feet of the property line uh from the center of that point uh to twenty feet on one direction on Brookwood and twenty feet in the other will be planted with, um let's pick some trees.
I would just say native evergreens, I'm just.
N- n- native evergreens.
Yep.
At least one, one picket line of native evergreens.
So I I got most of that. I'm just a little confused with the ten feet and then the twenty feet. Um I just got a little.
Well, what I would say is that if you look at the, where's the map, where's the picture with the colors? Okay, hold on, let me find it. It's here somewhere. Um yeah, let's see, page seven. It's that sort of leafy green.
Yeah.
Uh so that's it. So we look at the uh uh part, the line that's on the um uh property line. You see, you take the middle of that, so you take the middle of that, you do there and you do twenty feet in one direction on Brookwood, twenty feet in the other.
To just say to along the boundary that's currently labeled as a goat paddock, because we don't have a scale.
Yeah, I think that's sufficient.
That's fair, okay, fair enough and.
Ten foot out, ten feet out.
Extending ten feet beyond the end on each end. It's fair enough. That's close enough for government work. I think that should cover it and then has a little bit of a budge factor on the edges. And um and it would be a tree that is approved, a a a species is approved by the town planner. You would need to approve the species. Would have to be a deciduous. Excuse me, coniferous. Coniferous, sorry. Let's call this to a vote uh for approval on eighty two Brookwood Lane. I vote yes. Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
And Turner?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
Uh John Engel, you've recused yourself. Paul Knag?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
This one's approved. Uh next one is number three on one sixty four Smith Ridge Road. This is the field club. Commissioners, do you have any comments, questions? Motions?
Commissioner Chris, I move, we approve it.
Have a second.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Knag seconded it.
Real quick on the condition, obviously, one president said they didn't implied it or they didn't um satisfy the screening and the previous approvals. Do we have to put that in here as a condition?
No.
No, that's a di- uh just like the fence issue on the previous one. That can be revisited or visited by the uh town planner separately.
We discussed uh windscreen on the fence.
Windscreen on the west side facing Glen Drive.
Yep.
To help mitigate the light bleed.
Said no pickleball.
No pickleball period or just at night when the lights are on?
I think period.
No, they said they weren't gonna do pickleball at night.
They said they weren't gonna do pickleball on those courts. I will observe that we have seen numerous instances of people lining tennis courts for alternative use. I I think it's important that we note here that we will have no pickleball on these courts, which I believe is what Mr. Hutter, Hutter said.
So we don't have anything in our regulations addressing pickleball, so I don't, I don't think we can outright say that on these existing courts that no pickleball is allowed. I think it's totally acceptable to say no pickleball when the lights are on, but I don't think we have the authority to say no pickleball period.
E- even when the applicant specifically said that without being questioned, I I I think that we.
I personally took that comment as not when the lights were on.
What what he wrote, what he said was no pickleball on these lit courts, which means the courts not under light. That's all I I.
It's not in our regulations to um regulate pickleball on tennis courts, so. Um the only thing on paddle is that their courts count as building coverage, but we allow paddleball courts.
So we just separately, the town just went through an issue and had mead park with pickleball.
Right.
Yep.
Where the courts technically were open from eight AM till eight PM. Um and some of you may have read this in the paper, but there were people s- not sneaking in. There were people arriving at five thirty in the morning to play pickleball before they went off to work. Which you can imagine the noise disrupting all the neighbors. And they've subsequently locked the courts until eight AM to prevent that from happening. I think that threshold of eight AM to eight PM is a good one. And I, the eight PM um restriction, no, you know, no, there, we're gonna allow the lights, but there would be no pickleball after eight PM. If there is any pickleball on the courts, it wouldn't be allowed after eight PM, which would coincide with the lights and peaceful enjoyment by the neighbors.
Yeah. You say eight PM, but obviously if they play in the fall or winter, it's before eight. So is it just when the lights are on?
Um, yeah, leave it at that.
Okay, so no pickleball while the lights, while the lights. And I mean, if if we wanna consider looking at pickleball regulations with noise and stuff, we can add that to the to do list, but we don't have anything right now.
I would add it to the zoning amendment list.
Yep.
Okay, let's call this to a vote. Uh again, this is for one sixty four Smith Ridge, the lights at the tennis courts. Um Dan Radman?
Can you restate what the uh restrictions are on the approval, or what the conditions are?
I have them. A wind, a windscreen must be added to the western facing fence nearest Glen Drive, no pickleball while the lights are on.
Got it.
Yep. Call to vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, I caught, um I'm fine.
Okay, um Dan Radman, I vote yes. Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
And Turner?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
This one's approved. Um last item here is the planning and zoning amendment uh as far as daycare group is concerned. Uh amending the regulations and adding the uh taking away the special permit condition and adding into it, I'm gonna find my page here. The licensed by the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood as a requirement for daycare home group. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I move approval.
Paul Knag, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Krista's second.
Was there an effective date that we talked about?
We'll talk about that, yeah, on the approval. So the effective date was um twenty ninth?
That's the Friday.
September twenty ninth, effective date to satisfy the October first um action by the state. Do any comments or questions beyond that date stipulation?
And did we have the stipulation that it was to be um parking review or parking?
I'll confirm with Tina Ira that um our current home based um parking regulation covers us. And if not, we'll address next.
I think we're covered.
Yeah.
By that. But let's double check. It's called to a vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
This one's approved. Um administrative actions, um three sixty five Luke's Wood Road, Grace Farms. This is the court schedule for their underground basketball court. They come back to us every year with a court schedule for the fall um of the year and what they're gonna be doing. Um, pretty simple question, is this fall schedule the same as last year's fall schedule?
It's less intensive.
Less intensive. Well, that pretty much answers it, so. The answer is no. Yeah, yeah, we're gonna deny, no. Um so uh uh commissioners, any comments or questions or do we have to vote? We have to vote on it, right? So uh any comments or questions, or shall I just go straight to vote?
Straight to vote.
Motion.
Skills, oh yeah, we need a motion. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
That's Mr. Turner, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Call to vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Cris? Yes. Art Casavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring, oh sorry, I'm going down a list. John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes, I didn't vote.
And Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. I jumped over. All right, so that's approved. Uh the next one is five sixty four South Avenue YMCA. Um we have, every commissioner should have the previous approval in front of you from, I think it was two thousand fourteen?
So it's um, it's a memo from myself which was posted on the website listing relevant conditions from two thousand six and twenty fourteen, which are the two landscaping plans in question. And then there are also copies of the landscaping plans and then photos of the landscaping as is today. And so essentially um both landscaping plans are still, you know, these were what were approved and should be planted and exist on the YMCA property. Um the conditions read that um so I'm just trying to pull it up. So um, you know, in two thousand six, the one of the landscaping requirements, any shrubs or trees that are planted or transplanted pursuant to the stipulation shall be replaced in kind upon death if required for screening as determined by the zoning enforcement officer or the planning and zoning commission in their sole discretion. So essentially, you know, um it's probably been a few years since um we've taken a good look at this. Um a neighbor has brought up some concerns and submitted a letter which was posted on the website and was emailed to you all. Um so essentially, it's up to the zoning enforcement officers and the commission's discretion to determine, are they in compliance or are they not? This neighbor has concerns that they are not in compliance, um and we need to review and make a determination. And if we find that they're not in compliance, um I will coordinate with the Y to plant accordingly and we'll make sure it's maintained in perpetuity.
This is Commissioner Knagg, I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Ms. Carrie, uh you've inspected the property?
Yes.
And what do you think?
So um I don't think every single plant from these plans are in the ground today, but I think the commission needs to determine, do we want to ensure that every single plant that was on those plans is in the ground? Or is the screening adequate? Because you know, trees grow, they're, you know, they they get more mature over time, so um because a- as you'll see, it's hundreds, if not thousands of shrubs, bushes and everything. And so if we need to get to that fine level of detail, we'll do that. Um but I think, you know, the main question is, and as the regulation reads, any shrubs or trees that are planted or transplanted shall be replaced in kind upon death if required for screening as determined by the planning and zoning commission in their sole discretion.
Do you think it's adequate?
I do.
Okay.
So so you said a neighbor those has complained, so is there a hole somewhere in the screening?
So again, I provided photos, um and he also provided photos in the memo um that he had submitted. Um I can pull up the photos I took, um and again, so you know.
Which ones did you take?
So I took the ones.
Yeah.
All, all of the.
Just the ones.
Yeah, I took those photos.
The neighbor's letter is online.
I wanna be sure I.
Um.
Differentiating.
But essentially, you know, annually, we want to review this to make sure that if plants have died from a drought in the summer or whatever, that they're getting replaced. So the landscaping doesn't get worse. Um I don't think that was done for seven to five years. So you know, we're kind of starting a square one. Is this an adequate base for everyone? Um because I don't want, I don't need to make this decision by myself since it is a sensitive topic, you know, I do want input, which is why I remanded it to you all. Um.
This is Commissioner Chris, I'll chime in since I'm the, one of the plant guys, I'll does it myself and such. I'm looking at the first one you have, which has the um uh well, the first one, it doesn't, it's not, it says the twenty, the two thousand six approved planting plan. Um some of the trees clearly have gotten bigger. Now, these appeared, these are um uh all coniferous or deciduous trees?
Um they're mostly deciduous. There are a few coniferous, um you know, in the back, but um they were approved as deciduous. So obviously in the winter, it's not gonna be as strong, but they've improved as deciduous.
Well, I'm looking from the left to the right and the left of a big gap with a couple very small bushes. So it would seem to me that the idea of screening is you have all a blockage. And here we have some, but not full. And so it seemed to me there are some gaps. I'm looking at the other ones. And again, there's some some gaps there in the twenty fourteen, excuse me, one, I'm looking at that. On the picture on the left, there are some gaps as well. Uh and I see maybe some smaller gaps on the on the right picture. So my view is um you know, there are some, yes, uh there are, is a need for some fills uh in the plan. And so I would suggest that um those should be addressed to be as long as they're consistent with the plan they they had.
Yeah.
Uh can so.
Yeah, go beyond.
There, exactly, but there are a few missing bits. So I would look at if there are bushes and trees that were supposed to have been planted and for some reason are not there anymore. And the lack of that uh plant material is creating a gap, they need to be reinstalled, that would be my view.
So I just want clarification, um so are we basing it off of there are five, let's say there are five plants on this one section. We want five or we just don't want a gap? Because you know, going forward, if plants die, is it just we're trying to fill a gap or we want it exactly?
If they can, if they can fill it with four, that's fine, doesn't have to be five.
I think it would be the gap.
Yeah, I think it's the gap and it's the.
Yeah.
I mean, he's, he's pretty clear in his letter. Um if you guys have seen it, it's online, but he's identified exact quantities and areas where the gaps are. You know, where there were thirty two white pines planted. He complained that some were dying and unsafe. They removed twelve, but they've never replaced them, right? So that's, if that's indeed the case from the planting plan that's from the two thousand and six approved plan, if that's indeed the case, then they should be replaced. Um.
But again, is it twelve that we won't replace or if six are gonna fill the gap, six is fine, because I think we just.
I think it's to fill the gap.
Yeah.
Obviously, the, since then, those trees have matured, so they've gotten bigger and thicker.
Yeah.
So it, the intent is to fill the gap.
Okay.
Um he also brought up some low ground cover planting areas and planting beds that need to be cleaned up. I think that's a simple request out of that, that's more of an aesthetic issue, not necessarily a screening issue. Um why should take care of that um and maintain that area? And then there was one area where there was. And then there was one area where there was spruce trees and there were some had died and they replaced it with like a single tree. Again, they get need to reinstate that area with enough to fill the gap.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest is that uh Ms. Carrie uh revisit the site. Uh, and uh with the benefit of the information uh she's created as well as. The information put in the record by the neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
She come up with that suggested planting plan, she may want to review with the commission. Say, you know, here are the ones I think we should hit that we need. And so it could be the commission might say, well, she suggests, you know. Three, um, you know, uh, mountain laurels. I can't remember whether mountain laurel is one of them, but you know. Plants, but you know, maybe we need four and so forth, probably have a recommendation from her, and then we can adjust based on that.
That's fine. That's a simple, simple markup.
Okay.
You know, cir- circle three areas and recommend.
I'll come back with a.
Yeah. Recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
Um, there is one other item that I think we should just clarify. So with the white paint, with the white pines that the neighbor had addressed particularly. So, so the main issue was Putnam Road, but he was also talking specifically about his um property line. Um.
Right.
The, the trees were planted, I think in nineteen seventy five or something like that. And you know, the the initial intent was. That they wouldn't grow that tall. And so the screening is essentially gone because now it's all just trunks. Um. His request is that, you know, that doesn't count as screening anymore. I, I don't know if we can take that position. Because in previous, it was never brought up in twenty fourteen. It wasn't brought up in twenty nineteen when there was an approval. Um, so while we can replace the trees that were taken down and dying, I just want the commission to make a determination. Do those trees still count as screening?
I mean, those, those trees are eighty feet tall right now.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And there's just, there, there is a six foot stockade fence between him and the parking lot. I assume that's his fence. I'm, well, I'm assuming maybe it's the Y's fence.
Not sure.
Um. You know, w- we can't plant eighty foot trees. Right? Um, it's just the nature of the beast and what's, what's grown there over all these years.
I think, I think the issue is that they, they're too tall because it's no longer.
You just see that. We can't go back that way.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah.
We can't.
You can't.
I just, I just want a clear opinion of the commission.
I, I, I would incur with you, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, that ship has sailed and that. A tree of that height will provide screening, but depends if you're looking up on a, on a six story building, it provides screening there, but not on this. And this is a high-ish building, so it provides maybe a little bit, but essentially looking at a telephone pole. Um, between you and that. What I would suggest then is Carrie is that to the extent that uh some smaller bushes and so forth were in the planting plan. Around these, uh, that's a, that's a place to um see that they are properly installed. And if the thing is on its last legs, maybe it's time to reinstall them. And so that would provide, again, screening at a different height. So that you would deal with, you know, I think up to maybe seven, eight feet. Depending on the exact plant, plant material that is designated to be nearby.
Yep.
Um, so that would be a issue which may not have been an issue when the trees were just installed. But now that they're larger, they're performing a different function.
Okay.
Would seek your. Very interesting conversation because I know this site very well. And those trees do not screen anything any longer. I mean, they're beautiful. And the intention originally was correct, but now that they're eighty or more feet tall. At the base in the first ten feet or so, they're not screening anything. On the other hand, you really can't plant between the trees either because of the root systems. You'd kill those trees. So it's an interesting conceptual problem.
But I think.
How, what, what the definition is over time, when you actually put this into a uh, a, a rule or a law.
I think that's why, you know, we, we wouldn't plant these types of trees, you know? Knowing what we know, you would put something that's not gonna in fifty years have a massive trunk and.
Yes.
And our regulations are clear in terms of the reinstatement of screening, which is.
Well, that's.
We would reinstate only if they had died or been removed, right? In this case, they grew.
They grew and they, they're healthy.
And they, they were put in for a reason and they did what they were supposed to do. They, they might not do that now because of their size. But that doesn't mean that the Y is uh negligent in what they had done.
No, they're, I'm, I'm not talking about what the Y has done and what the original intention was. I'm talking about how to, how to conceptualize this going forward.
Hmm.
When you actually say that we are need to plant screening in a certain place. What does that mean? And when you think twenty five to fifty years out, it means something different.
Sure.
Well, what is it? I, I take your point, Mr. Swed. Let's why we have John. It brings up the issue of you gotta pick the right plant material for the right purpose.
Right.
And so uh if it's a very tall building, you may want to have a tree that gets somewhat larger. To the extent you need something with a mature height of twelve feet to do the job, you pick that. And some trees have a lot of trunk and then you have the foliage, some have uh more uh thickly branched. Uh, uh, applications as closer to the ground like a holly tree. So you gotta pick the right material, plant material from the get go to be sure it's doing what it is you want to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and uh here, for whatever reason, did it for a while, but not now, but that again, the chip is sailed.
Yep, I have a question. So conceptually on this.
That's right.
This seems to be the exception. Usually, is it fair to say ninety percent of the, first of all. We encounter screening on every P and Z meeting. It comes up. I would say at least ninety percent of the time, we require screening to be established. With no mention of maintaining a script, a, and the word you used was intent.
On the institution.
Would you say it's fifty percent of the time that we say, and you ma- must maintain it between your neighbor?
I think it's all the time.
I mean, the whole, the, the whole purpose of the conditions is that for as long as that special permit to be in effect, that condition needs to be met. Unless stated otherwise. So, you know, even on a small residential application, the, the intention is. Those, that screening must stay as long as whatever was granted a special permit is in existence. We um. We had one recently come up. Someone just purchased a house and they had a special permit, I think, for a pool in the front yard or something like that. And they were asking about cutting down trees and we pulled up the old special permit and we're like, you can't cut those down unless you replace them, you know, so.
And do we say one for one, or do we say the intent, which was the word, you know, intent to fill the gaps or intent to meet the original count? I think. What do we do?
Historically, it's always been vague in the conditions. It's, it's, you know, on a small residential application, it's typically just something like, and that there's a landscaping buffer. There's, it, it typically doesn't say, and there are five arborvitaries in this spot. We're, we're being much more specific now, which is helpful. Um, in the future, but historically, it's been very vague. So it's mostly been us interpreting it.
Like to just fill us in with a little history from somewhere else. So we had the same problem in Weston. We built a new school system. And it was going to impact badly the neighbors. That was clear. So to do screening, the screening would not be adequate in the first five or ten years. And would become inadequate in the next twenty five to fifty years. So we actually built berms. And on to, on to the six foot berms, we then did screening, what would become screening. So we really looked at it very differently than just putting in plant material.
Yeah, there, there are berms on this property. Yeah, I mean, here there are, there's berms, there's a fence, and there's the planting.
So there's three, there's three layers. No, not six, they're three foot berms.
Yeah, but I mean, that's.
I understand, but then you've got the fence behind it and the planting. I mean, it's multi-layered, in my opinion, this planting.
Well, again, the, this Commissioner Chris, the, the issue becomes one of how far apart from, you know. The impacted neighbor versus the installation versus the building. And um also how high is the building? How large is the, what's the nature of the uh neighbor's house? And what the sightlines are, and that's a case by case basis. And so you, you really need to make uh individual judgments on individual sites. Because each one is slightly different. There may be natural features of hills or of cliff or something like this you take in consideration. But you have to really pick the right plant material for the job as far as height and thickness. Uh, so that it will, okay, may not do it from installation day one, okay? But uh you want something that will at a, as mature height is, is doing what it's supposed to do. I think is what we've been trying to do for this commission, and I think reasonably effectively. You know, he's do a better job, but I think we've been pretty picky about these things.
Yes.
Appropriately so, in my view. So that people are protected long term as opposed to ten years and that's not.
So what I hear Sarah saying is that this is uh, uh, this is the rule, not the exception, that we require. Um, uh, the YMCA, Grace Farms, the, the field club. We not only specify upfront, but we require them to maintain the screening as it was originally intended. And we're not picking on the Y in doing so. This is what we do typically. That was, that was what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
That, that is our standard.
It is.
Well, I'm, I want to also be on the record that I'm very pleased that uh these things are being looked at more diligently by staff. I think this is very good because we want to ensure things are enforced and uh. So good on you. So we should continue to do this.
Bravo.
Okay.
So just to be clear, I'll, I'll come back next month with.
A plan.
A suggestion.
Um. Recommendation.
Yep, and we'll, we'll go from there and we'll coordinate with the Y as needed.
Agreed. Um, next item we have is a discussion on P O C D, uh, community survey, next step on next subcommittee meeting.
Yep.
What do we have planned?
Okay. You have, you have your notes?
Yep, so um, community survey is launching on September eleventh, um, running until the twenty ninth or the thirtieth. I don't remember which. Yeah, another month. Um. We want everyone, all private citizens, so you know, we want you all to fill it out, not as a P and Z commission member, but you know, as, as a resident of New Canaan. And you know, for those of you not on the subcommittee, um, any clubs and organizations you're with, please just spread the word. We're gonna do a press release, send out a bunch of email blasts. Um, but you know, any words spreading that you can do helps. Um, and then next subcommittee meeting de- definitively is gonna be on October eighteenth. Which is a week later than what we talked about at the last meeting. Um, there was a.
So no subcommittee meeting in uh September?
Well, as Commissioner Chris, uh, it's still in the books. I think the chances of that happening are slim. But I'd rather cancel it a few days beforehand in case something comes up, but I seriously doubt there will be a meeting.
Okay.
Um, the last meeting we had early in the month to fill the other commissioners in. It was focused with uh the subcommittee and S L R, which is our designated uh consultant. And uh the bulk of the meeting was regarding the uh design of the survey. So they had a proposal, which I thought was, was pretty good. And there was a robust discussion among members of the subcommittee who may, and they all made very good comments. And I think those comments were um landed and were taken in consideration by S L R.
Yeah.
Um, and uh changes are, are in the process of being made. And again, that will be sent out. Um, furthermore, um, there, I discussed with um Ms. Carrie, sort of a. It's called an alert system or distribution went through not only every, anyone with a government email, which includes us plus many other boards and commissions. So they're gonna get it. All elected officials will get a copy of this, so they'll be aware. And um with a request to spread the word, but also suggested that um, you know, the rectors of all the houses of worship get one. Various charities and clubs and other associations get one. Uh, we put um, and so forth and say, you know, please spread the word.
Hmm.
So we're trying to spread it as, as broadly as possible. We have some advertisements in the newspapers.
Yep, we are.
On this a- a- and so forth. There's a website could be up, so we're, we're, we're trying to spread the word as much as possible.
The survey would go live when?
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
Uh, September eleventh?
Yep.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman. And um, the next meeting uh that we're definitely gonna have, again, September is doubtful. Very doubtful would be the eighteenth of October, and that is going to be reviewing the results with S L R. And that would be with the subcommittee, uh, talking about that and will be um, uh, review of that. And also discussion of the, I'm gonna call it community meeting, which is set for the twenty sixth, I believe. That's gonna be at Lapham. We're picking that because they need some space that have a set of booths or tables to talk about various topics. Uh, and that is really gonna be the, the official real kickoff.
Yep.
Of the survey and beginning to uh get um direct community reaction. So on face to face basis.
That, that.
Um.
The twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth of.
October.
Yeah.
October.
Which I think, Dan, you had mentioned at the meeting or.
Yeah, I'm not here that week.
And so for all commissioners, you know, you're all welcome to come to the community.
Certainly.
Um, engagement component. Um, we want as many people there as possible. And you know, it's not just a subcommittee that'll be voting on this at the end, so.
Be full of commission. And uh, I guess the thinking is that in probably November, December, maybe beginning of January. There may be uh, uh, several meetings on somewhat specific topics so that we can get everyone in the room on a particular topic such as. You know, like, I'm thinking perhaps environmental and uh cultural and historical preservation. Get the, an open space, have those folks in one room. Let's, let's, let's talk about it. And it's really a listening session on the part of the uh subcommittee in order to hear what people think on those specific topics. Um, in, in a more interactive, live, face to face basis. Um, more detail on that as it emerges. I think we want to uh wait as far as timing and topics until we get the feedback from the survey. And help, you know, benefit from that wisdom is the master plan at this point.
Would you contact the Sentinel, the new newspaper?
All the newspapers, all the newspapers will be uh noticed, plus various charities in town and groups. Uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce and.
Right.
I think it was a list of about twenty, twenty-five names we came across. Might include the country clubs too, I think about it.
Don't worry.
Yeah. So we're, we're trying to spread the word everywhere we possibly can. Um, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, just to confirm, so eighteen is the next P O C D meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, possibly in September, but I really, really doubt it. I'd rather cancel at the last minute, just so it's in the. But there are those two, there will be important meetings.
Okay. Um, next item, we have the approval of the minutes from last month's meeting, which was considered a special meeting.
Wait, Dan, was there no item on outdoor dining?
Oh, no, there is.
Oh, there is. Sorry, I missed that. Yes, outdoor dining discussion.
Um.
Fill us in.
Yeah, so I thought this would be a short meeting, which is why I put this on, so apologies. Um.
This is a short.
Technically, it's still.
Technically, yeah. So, um, you know.
Try and wrap it up before nine thirty.
We're mostly um, through uh our first outdoor dining season where COVID rules are not in effect. And you know, we're operating on regulations that we've had since two thousand nine. So um, you know, I wanted to start a dialogue of, do we want to revisit our fees? How long outdoor dining is permitted, date wise? Um, and then we do have an occupancy issue. Um, that the fire marshal in the building official have asked us to address. Um. So I just wanted to, I'll, I'll share my screen. But so I just wanted to, you know, start having a conversation. Is there an appetite to do that? Um, you know, right, I can go over what we do right now and then.
I think there is, and I, I think it's a wise thing to do just because of not only the, the, the new um culture. That's been instituted on outdoor dining post COVID.
Yeah.
But also the town's modifications to available space for outdoor dining, which has now. Uh, grown exponentially.
Um, so, yes, so um. We currently only charge three hundred dollars for outdoor dining on the sidewalks, regardless of if you have four tables or if you have thirty tables.
So yearly?
What?
Yearly?
Yeah, annually. So, you know, I, I kind of did an audit of what other towns are doing. Um, planning and zoning in most towns does not have jurisdiction over this. It's typically the Board of Selectmen, but we're a little different. Um, while we have to get approval from Board of Selectmen, we, we get to suggest it, and we're the ones that charge at these. So the, the one I liked the best was Stanford. They do a sliding scale based on the number of tables that you have. Um, and you know, the more tables you have, it jumps up sign significantly. And you know, I think that would address the whole bump out. Larger sidewalks in certain places, so then, you know, people can't complain. Oh, well, why do they have a larger sidewalk? Well, they're paying more. So um, you know, the, the one thing to consider though, and um, let me try to zoom in for you guys. Um. So you know, um, right now, we have two restaurants that have one to two, or sorry, I did it based on number of seats versus tables.
Yeah.
But so we only have two restaurants that have under ten seats, seven restaurants between eleven and twenty seats, five, twenty-one to thirty seats. And then two with thirty-one plus seats, so um.
That many restaurants without toward dining?
Yep. Um, but so this year.
It's everywhere.
With the three hundred dollar fee, we brought in forty-eight hundred. Um, you know, one option is to do this one to ten, eleven to twenty, twenty-one to thirty, thirty-one plus. And just add a hundred dollars, or we could be a little more aggressive, one to fifteen seats, keep it at three hundred. Double it if you're fifteen to thirty, and if you're thirty-one plus, double it more. Stanford's is even more aggressive, but you know, there is.
Stanford charge.
Where they charge?
Um, where did I? So they had a s- they had thirty-five plus seats because they had, they have a lot of larger restaurants, that was eighteen hundred dollars. Um, they also did one to fifteen, I believe it was five hundred, um, and they also have a sliding scale where. Every two years it's going up, so they have their permit fees listed through like twenty, thirty.
I have a question, Ms. Carrie, um, it's Commissioner Chris. It, it seems to me that some of the uh, parking spaces have been cannibalized by those kind of.
Yep.
Those water-filled K rails. In my view is if we are sacrificed, we the town are sacrificing a parking space. For the benefit of a private business, that they ought to pay extra for that.
Yep, and so, so that's where this table thing, or the, the number of seats, charging it that way, because um. I, I don't know what in particular, in particular is fueling why some restaurants get that bump out and others don't. And so instead of dipping into that, just, okay, you're able to have more seats, you're paying more.
Right.
Um.
I mean, it's costing the town to pave those areas and create that seating.
Yep.
Then at least one of your comps showed that, I think maybe it was Westport, that in addition to the fee, if they were reducing, getting rid of any parking, they had to pay. Basically, the revenue that that parking spot would have.
That was Greenwich. I couldn't find what they were charging. I reached out, they didn't.
But I mean, let's be honest, there is revenue loss when you take a parking spot.
So we, we could also do that, but you know, that, that may be harder to sell to the Board of Selectmen, I'm just not sure.
It's gonna be hard to do retroactively too, because some parking spots have now been taken away by.
By the.
The most recent bump outs.
Yeah.
Well, if, if there, Mr. Chairman, if there are bump outs that have happened because they extended the sidewalk, again, that, that ship has sailed. Uh, but to the extent you have what could be a live parking space that has been walled off by those uh, K rails. Filled with water, that's a whole different situation. I remember conversations in this commission regarding what is the value of a parking spot. And it's, it's a lot of money, and we seem to be giving it away for reasons that are unclear to me.
Yep, um. And again, so we can consider charging for the usage of a parking spot, um. And I'm happy to do that, and I can put more effort into finding out what other, you know, what Greenwich is charging and figure out, you know, is there. Numerical value placed on parking spaces, so we can come up with an appropriate fee, um, the caution is there. You know, the Board of Selectmen could shoot that down, but.
But could I ask a question, Sarah? I- i- is there any, uh, or actually two parts to the question. One is, is there any way that this discussion belongs in the P O C D development issue? And the second question is, there are enormous distinctions. For example, trying to pass on the sidewalk on Forest Street now is virtually impossible. Um. Uh, it, has there been any complaint set coming into your office about? Even continuing this, or whether or not it's problematic, or is just everybody happy with this?
No, it's, it's a mixed bag, um, so. Let, let me start with your first question. I don't think this should be wrapped into the P O C D, um, the P O C D is not gonna be finalized until the middle of next summer, early fall. And I think we need to know, if, if we're going to change things, I think it needs to be ready for March of two thousand twenty-four. Um, because we, we don't wanna go into another dining, outdoor dining season and not have a plan, if we, if we wanna change things, um. And then, other part of your question, we have received some complaints, um. The Fire Marshal and Stephen, our Assistant Zoning Inspector, they, they're going out weekly, trying to make sure that there's a four-foot pathway. Um, which is required by ADA. Obviously, on the weekends when no one's around, my understanding is it, it does become a bit of a free-for-all. We do get some complaints from the retailers specifically in town, um, but I, I haven't heard many complaints from residents about it. My, my understanding is that most people are enjoying the outdoor dining, because there has been a cultural shift since COVID. I think people realized how nice it is to eat outside, when, once people didn't have a choice, um. And you know, pre-COVID, the, these regulations are from pre-COVID, and they state that, you know, as long as you pay the fee and you meet our requirements. You can put tables out on the sidewalk, so. This isn't brand new, it's just, how do we wanna change it now that we're living in, in a culturally shifted world?
Well, in terms of.
A word on that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Two things. First of all, where do we lose revenue? Uh, I'll take Elm Street for example, there's no revenue for parking on Elm Street, other, other than tickets that are issued.
Yeah.
Um. That's, I, I mean, maybe that's where the revenue is that we're, that's being lost. Uh, but I don't see any other streets where outdoor, outdoor dining is being facilitated in exchange for revenue. That's my first comment. The second comment is, the fees you are charging now are rounding errors, they, they don't mean anything. Three hundred dollars a year.
Yep.
So I think, i- i- and even if you make it four hundred dollars a year, it's like. How much is that for a tab, or, you know, is that like uh, an extra two cents for? Per tab uh, over the year? So i- it's a rounding error, our question is, how much do you want? To charge for those fees and what we do with those fees? Does it just go into a general fund? Or do you actually, you build out more sidewalks, or they actually, are the fees dedicated towards any?
So planning and zoning fees go to, go towards the general fund to, to fund our budget, you know, annually.
But where are we losing the revenue? That's my primary question.
So, um. I, I don't know specifically where the town is, other than, you know, there's no, the parking spots no longer available, but as you point out. You're not charging, we're not charging for parking.
This Commissioner Chris, we, there is this issue of fee and lieu on parking. So for example, if you're required of X amount of parking and maybe you don't have it.
Yeah.
You gotta write a check. Is there, remember that check is what, twenty thousand dollars or something like this?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, and that's a permanent loss, permanent loss of a parking spot. So we're giving it away for zilch. Okay, it said zero, so obviously we're losing something, but I, I, I still wonder why are we giving away? Parking spots to a private business. So I, we're have a, essentially a public asset. That is being given to a, a private enterprise, I, it's unclear to me why.
Well, I would argue the opposite of that. I think if you're giving a parking space, you're giving it to a private entity, and that's the person who's parking in the parking space. And you're taking away public space from the public. So I actually, I think the obverse of what you've just said. I think what we're doing in New York City, for instance, is a great uh, benefit to the city, where we're. Uh, widening sidewalks, providing more public space and taking parking away, so. I think we need both. We need parking, but we don't necessarily need it in places where we have good public space.
How would somebody suggest, uh, Commissioner, that there's a difference between saying we're bumping out the sidewalk and widening it? We've made an affirmative decision to cannibalize a parking space and turn it to sidewalk, that's one decision. Different decision is, we're leaving the parking space there, we're just gonna wall it off with some K rails, so that some private enterprise can use it. Those are different conversations.
They are, and I would not do the second.
Which is what we are doing.
I think that's a mistake.
So that's my point, that's my point.
Just so everyone understands the history of outdoor dining in New Canaan. John knows it, right? You're smiling like you know it. Um, so. Prior to, it's probably ten years ago. Um, Forest Street had um, parking on both sides of the road. And there was, I don't think there was, there was limited outdoor dining uh, in front of where. Uh. What is that, the farm table place in Kava, right? The Kava didn't have it, yeah, down, down that road, but it was like one, one row of two tops. Just so you could get down on the sidewalk, and the town made a conscious decision. To widen the sidewalk there to facilitate outdoor dining. This is pre-COVID, this is ten, twelve years ago. Um, and eliminate that parking and basically gave those restaurants outdoor dining. That established a precedent for how we treated those retailers. And. Because of COVID and even, I, I think Elm Street, wasn't it widened before COVID, just before COVID, or?
I thought it was widened because of the uh, that crosswalk issue.
Wasn't that pre-COVID?
Crosswalk.
Was the. Yeah, so, so they.
Lost a lot of spaces.
We lost a lot of spaces that, no matter what, we're gonna be striped off and unused. And the town looked at it as an opportunity to provide outdoor dining. So we went through that exercise on Elm Street and provided selected areas of outdoor dining. In front of certain restaurants, because they were gonna be lost spaces anyway.
They happened to be lucky and where those, they were located.
Correct.
They're in front of the uh, no go, new no-go areas.
So. Now we have a case where we have a multitude of outdoor dining solutions, and we to date. Have, other than this nominal fee, processing fee effectively.
Yeah.
Um, we have not been charging them, anyone for loss of parking spots. For any loss of revenue. So, while I agree that we should maybe figure out a way to do it, the. It's gonna be difficult because the argument is there for all of these new restaurants that. Might take up a parking spot, they're gonna point and say, well, none of them had to pay for it.
Right.
They all got free dining. Why am I paying for it? And I'm specifically referring to Chef Louis, who is now working around Jersey barriers, right? Where the other guys don't have that K rails, whatever, yeah. Um. That's, that's, well, in my opinion, I don't think that's fair. I think the way to do it is the sliding scale you described, regardless of whether it's. Within that contained area or whether it's in a paved area.
Yeah.
It should be based on the number of seats that are out there, and we should have a. We can do a quick analysis on this, what the allowable square footage is for the density of seats they're proposing. Meaning, for a two-top table, you need, and I'm making it up, ten square feet, and for a four-top table, you need. Twenty square feet, whatever those numbers are, they're gonna know how much square foot is available to them in that paved area. That's how many seats they can put out there. Not more than that, because if they put more than that, we know what's gonna happen, it's gonna crowd the sidewalk. So by putting in a metric by which we can determine how many seats they can have outside, that'll help mitigate the. Congestion of the walkway.
So are you recommending we just add within the regulations, you know, once, once we figure, once we do the analysis, just, let's say. You can't have more than two seats per ten square feet of area.
Yeah.
Just make it clear in these regulations, okay?
It's a simple calculation.
Like a foot area ratio, kind of.
We know how mu- how big a two-top table with seating.
Yeah.
You know, you always account for nineteen inches back from the edge for the seat dimension. You know what the table dimension is, and you have some circulation, so you come up with a round number of, you know, how much square feet per seat is required. It's not gonna be perfect math, but it'll be close.
Plus or minus, yeah.
Plus or minus.
What else is, just these feet look low.
Yes, yeah, so I mean, this was, this was just quick, just to make sure you guys liked the sliding scale method, I'll.
Sliding scale, yeah.
Do actual. You know, analysis to figure out what, what makes more sense, but noted that it's a little low.
Yeah.
Well.
Actually, I was thinking, how did you arrive at this? And when he said fifteen thousand dollars for a lost parking spot in, in the fee of, in lieu. And I was thinking, so what's it worth over twenty years? You know, if you took your six hundred dollars times twenty, you know, you get pretty close to that. So I thought, it's actually kinda related to the fifteen thousand dollar loss of a spot.
And, and we can do that analysis for the per-seat cost, maybe it's, I, I don't know what it is, you know, maybe it's fifty bucks a seat, whatever it is, a year.
Yeah.
And, you know, they, they make that in one night for that one seat.
I, I think we also need to be diligent about the uh, four-foot space everywhere, because a lot of places in town, that's, that's a challenge. And I'll say this, as someone of six foot four, I keep trying to walk down the street, and I'm banging my head in umbrellas every, every two. That is no fun either, I gotta crouch. I mean, okay, maybe not everyone's six-four, but you know, it's no fun.
Yep.
Um, that's another, I don't know, I'm sure because of planning and zoning issue, but it's cer- certainly uh, annoys me. But the, the four-foot, this is a safety issue, and it's an ADA issue, and I don't think we wanna.
Definitely.
I don't even wanna compromise on that at all.
It became an issue, and my understanding was in twenty twenty-one, it was particularly bad that year, and the town got into some trouble. With the ADA, so we, we've been trying to stay on top of it, but again, weekends are kinda difficult when staff isn't around to police.
Yep. Well, I, I, I would think that um, well, I, I don't wanna paint lines in the sidewalk. No, no, it's just, it's just enforcement.
Um, so, so that was, that's item one. Item two is, um, you know, some towns just allow outdoor dining all year. Um, we allow it April first to October thirty-first. We don't have to change those dates, cause I mean. Seasonally, I think that you're not really gonna sit outside much later. I mean, I guess you could argue climate change, but.
I wouldn't change those dates.
Okay.
When you put this on, I wasn't sure if you were gonna go into other details. Do we have any? Uh, regulations over kind of the lighting, over the cleanliness, over the type of barriers they use, over the size of umbrellas, all that. Stuff that I think.
Those gas heater things too.
If you do it right, it looks nice in the town. If you do it wrong, it really looks.
Yep, so um, I believe that's addressed those are our current regulations, um. The other, so, dates aside, the other issue is occupancy, essentially, um, for. Restaurant, you know, you have a certain number of bathroom fixtures required based on the occup- occupancy of the restaurant. Um, that applies to outdoor dining during COVID, those rules got thrown out the window. Um, they've become an issue, um, the Fire Marshal and Building Official estimate that about fifty percent of restaurants in town are. Not complying with their occupancy.
It's not a load.
So.
Planning and zoning.
So. Our regulations host all of the requirements, so we have health code requirements in the sidewalk guidelines. We're the, we're the ones that change it, so basically, there are two options to address that, which I'll explain in a moment, but basically. We have to, they're fine with either option, but one of those has to get incorporated into the regulation.
We have to relax the regulations to meet the realities, one of them.
So not relaxing the regulation, so option one is essentially, if you're over and you want outdoor dining. Remove a table from inside, that's option one. So if you, if you're five tables over, remove five from inside. And the Building Official and the Fire Marshal will handle that, it's just, it has to be stated in the regulations. And it's not right now, and we're the ones that can change the regulations, no one else can, so. That is option one, option two, which is what.
And then that's if they're over.
If they're.
The amount, so just so everyone understands, as far as the building code is concerned. There's, there's a range of occupancy numbers, like if it's between zero and twenty, you need one. I believe it's zero and twenty, you need one bathroom, single unisex bathroom. If you, if it's occupancies between zero and fifty or zero and seventy-five, I think it depends on jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction.
Um, but you need one single holder for each sex, and these days that becomes two unisex.
Yes.
And then it goes up, it's a, it's a relative scale from there, it's, you know, seventy-five to two hundred or whatever the number is, and the fixture count goes up from there. So, some of these restaurants, even with outdoor dining, might still be compliant.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Definitely.
But there are a handful that won't be. Because they, they've probably been there so long, they've, they're not compliant from beginning.
So, that's option one, just remove the tables from the inside. Option two, which is what was done this season. And I, you know, after it was all said and done, realized that every other form they have to sign off on is stated in those regulations. And we had them sign off on this, and it was not stated in the regulations, um. But so basically, it's an affidavit that attests that the owner and the manager understand that they're over occupancy. And that in the case of an emergency, a client or um, a patron at the restaurant can use an employee's bathroom facility.
Say that, I don't say the end?
I don't think so, I don't think so, that's.
The Building Official and the Fire Marshal.
That's not ADA, you can't.
Okay.
Um, and I think this requires some legal input, I mean, you know, we're taking on a responsibility that, you know.
Yeah, in the, in the restaurant industry, or in terms of occupancy in a restaurant, I happen to know this one well. Um, the, the um, crew and the staff are allowed, if it's an eight, well. They're, first of all, they're allowed to have a non-ADA compliant bathroom for the crew. Because the understanding is that the crew can use the ADA compliant bathroom for the public. But the reverse is not true, the public cannot use a staff bathroom.
Okay. I'm sure, and so again, this is, this was information given to me by the Fire Marshal and the Building Official, so.
Right.
Um, points are taken, um, Greenwich does option one, that's where that came from, it's stated clearly.
One for one, the tables from inside.
Yeah, so. Um. Just.
What was the, the affidavit one, can you read that again?
Yeah, so I slash we is owner, operator and manager of the restaurant known as Blah, located at Blah in New Canaan, Connecticut, will not deny any patrons' use of the employee toilet facility.
That one, yeah. Uh, I, yeah, I think we need legal weigh-in on that, I think there might be an affidavit. Um. Uh, solution, I don't think that's the right one.
Okay.
It might be more of where I as owner take full responsibility if there is an OSHA complaint or. Um, some other complaint about inaccessibility of bathrooms and relieve the town of all responsibility for this non-compliance.
Okay.
That's just off the top of my head, but something like.
Okay, and I mean, again, the other option is we could just. Okay, and I mean, again, the other option is we could just wash our hands of it, and just add in that language that Greenwich has, which is. If you're over occupancy, remove the tables from inside if you want them outside.
I think that could be potentially devastating, I'm thinking of a couple of these restaurants that, if they, if they took out, uh. From the inside of their restaurants, um, all the seats for which they had outdoor dining, they, like Rosie's. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming, like Rosie's probably has fifteen chairs outside, if they took away fifteen chairs from the inside. That's a significant portion of Rosie's, and it would change the nature of their business, it might mean that they have to. Let some people go.
Locali has more chairs outside than they do inside.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're now eliminating everything.
Yeah, great.
It would seem to me essentially what happened is that, because of outdoor dining, the uh. Restaurants expanded in size significantly, but their infrastructure in order to support that greater size did not change at all.
Correct.
That's what we ended up with.
Yep, that's correct. But if their infrastructure is adequate for their patrons, and adequate for. You know, a- a- and it's working practically, then I'm, I'm, I'm wondering whether we could go to the affidavit. Method, you know, whether, I mean, I'd, I'd rather that than just go to, it's just like, we don't enforce, and, you know, we're. We're rethinking, how much parking does a business need, where, are we allowed to rethink how much bathroom? Does a business need, if it, no, part of the year.
No, it's building.
Part, it's, it's building code, yeah.
You can't, parking, parking is localized and jurisdictional.
And sanitation.
Sanitation and plumbing and bathroom requirements is part of the I B C, and it's building code, and it's.
So how can you solve that with an affidavit?
That's where we need legal advice.
So, noted, so, I will. Necessary channels, and so, um, you know, again, I'll, I'll come back next month with more developed suggestions, hopefully have a. More concrete answer on this affidavit, and then eventually, you know, um, we'll need to do some sort of public hearing, just. So the masses can provide input, since this is such a sensitive topic.
So you ask how, how can you do that, there's, even in the ADA, there's a, I won't call it a loophole, it, it's a loophole, but. For example, in New York City, you have a lot of existing buildings that are. Almost impossible to retrofit for ADA compliance, they have elevator shafts with undersized elevators that are not ADA compliant. And in order to make them ADA compliant, you're basically ripping the building down, so they allow those to remain as a grandfathered condition. Same thing applies to hallways and aisleways, and unless you're doing a substantial amount of work to the building to. Allow the upgrade to happen, you're allowed to grandfather it and keep that condition, and that, that same stipulation is how some. Businesses in town, our local building inspector allows this, is, for example, they have a step to get into the building, into the space, into the retail space. This is on, you know, there's, they're on uh, Main Street across from Town Hall, down on Forest. That step is allowed to remain, because in order to try and create a ramp condition, you're effectively gonna be ripping the entire front of the building off. To make that happen, so it's, it's not really feasible, and they allow it to remain. So. The, the metaphor I'm trying to establish is, there's been a whole new, to your point, a, a density. Growth now, which has happened with this outdoor dining as a result of COVID. That is now affecting the regulations for bathrooms, for example, right? How, how do we? And, and, and to ask those business, and to ask those businesses to retrofit the bathrooms for the outdoor dining. Could prove detrimental to those businesses.
And it's not in our power to forgive it.
But it, it, there should be something out there to alleviate us of the liability. Anything else on that?
No, those are the three main items. So it's planning and zoning and the board of selectmen. Yeah, th- this is what we're changing, like if, if we add something.
Actually, could you circulate that PDF to?
I post, it's posted on the website, or did I not post, um, it's, it's definitely on the website.
On the, on the agenda?
Um, I may have removed it from my memo, but, um. I'll, I'll send it out to everyone, it's, it is on the website, but I'll send it out.
Uh, sidewalk cafe guidelines, yeah, it's there. Okay, last item, everyone, uh, special, the approval of the minutes from the July twenty-sixth, are we? Has everyone taken a look, are we good with the minutes, any issues, any changes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Anybody?
Second.
Second, Turner, uh, Dan Rabbin, I vote yes, Kristen Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes, was I there, or I'm, do I have to recuse myself?
Yeah, you were not there, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Turner, yes, John Chris.
Yes.
Mark Casavon.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
And I don't remember where Paul, Tom, or Alan seated for that one. All three were, okay. That's right, the, the tennis court vote, um, Mr. Knagg.
Yes.
Mr. Benton.
Yes.
Mr. Swirlo.
Yes.
So we have approval of minutes, uh, last quick item, um. I know that we've, we originally in, earlier in the year, moved the meetings up to six o'clock to try and buy time. Um, with all of the big P O C D applications, sorry, the eight-thirty G applications that were in front of us, but things have kind of leveled off. At least for now, um, so I see no reason why the meetings couldn't start at seven o'clock for the remainder of the year. Uh, we can reevaluate later in the year if necessary, and if there's a special meeting, we always can do a special meeting, um, but I think we. I would recommend going back to a seven o'clock start time, and still, the rule still applies, you know, ten-thirty, if we don't hear an application by ten-thirty. We push it to the next meeting, um, would everyone be in favor of that? Favor? Do we need to vote on that?
Um, so.
What is, does that complicate things?
I, I was not here when we changed it back to six, I feel like we, you had a vote on a totally updated. You changed the time, but it, it's not an agenda item. Um, so we can't vote on an agenda item, so, um.
Well, we can push it till next meeting.
So you're okay, starting September at six?
Start September at six, and then we'll put it on the agenda, we'll vote on it then.
Can we, can we also, if we need to, I think the October meeting, is that still the thirty-first?
It's the twenty-fourth, no, it's the twenty-third. It's the twenty-fourth.
Fourth of October?
It, the meetings, the, the schedule is confusing, it obviously is the last Tuesday of the month, but it's really the fourth Tuesday of the month, most of the time.
It's the twenty-sixth of September is the next P and Z meeting.
Yeah, but he was talking about October, it's not the thirty-first.
Okay, we're done, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.